Good. Does everybody get their mics on?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I think we're ready to get started. Find a spot. Thank you. Going to call the meeting to order. This is a continuation of a continuation of the hearing on the proposed cannabis ordinance. And we'll get started with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe that we will be getting on page 33 is where we left off. Peter, is there anything you want to go over first?
Yes, there were a few things I just want to sort of touch base on before we get dive back into the ordinance. First of all, I passed out a one-page document that one identifies, one of the edits that I missed in the packet that I sent out at the end of last week. And that was the edits to 1795-090i. These were sort of a modified version of what Commissioner Lattish had proposed. I sort of struggled with understanding. I knew what we were trying to say, it just was difficult. And I thought that the general public reading that might have some challenges reading it. So I am proposing that we consider an alternative to that that was adopted by the commission. And that's shown in the next paragraphs of alternative language. There was one thing I struggled with. And then there's maybe a couple of other little minor edits that we might want to do on that. Where we had one 75 feet and then two 150 feet. I couldn't figure out whether it should be or, or and, or except, as Commissioner Lattish had proposed. And Ethan had suggested that maybe the better way to do it is to say, notwithstanding subsection one, 100 feet for colocation. And then I'd also add of commercial cultivation sites as provided in 1795-090f. So that sort of avoids that confusion of and or or. Because some people read if it's and, it means you have to do both. If it's or, you have your choice. It's obviously not intended. It's one, you know, if you hit meet one criteria, you do this. If you hit the other criteria, you do that. So if that is acceptable, I would also add the word minimum, the first line, the following minimum setbacks added. So that is the first proposal.
So you're proposing the notwithstanding version? That's the clearest?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. There were also four instances where the terms premises and cultivation sites. You've been sort of going back and forth with that. And I think that the commission had decided that we were measuring the minimum setback and separation from the cultivation site, not necessarily the premises. And so those four instances where we plugged in premises, it's sort of a general edit. We need to go back and change that back. And so I would just suggest that we go back to cultivation site on those four instances where that was used.
And I point out on subsection Q, there are two more places in that section where premises need to be changed to cultivation site. Subsection five and subsection, or the end of the language at the bottom of that section.
Flag that before and this again. One other issue is, hold on, let me think this.
Yes. Could somebody shut the door, please? Thank you.
So if there is general consensus with the commission on those changes, we can move on to one other item.
Commissioners?
I agree.
Sounds good, I agree.
That's fine.
Yes.
So yesterday, the board held a study session on the background check ordinance. They gave direction to the CIO to return with modifications to that ordinance. And also to create a new department or division under the CIO that would be the cannabis control officer or whatever. We don't have a name for that yet. So throughout the ordinance, and I've not provided you a written copy of that, but made edits to the recommended draft that will be going to the board, assuming that something is forwarded to the board today, that adds the word wherever it says planning director or county designate, because it may not be the planning director who will be responsible for this. And where it says planning department, it'll be planning or other designated department. So that's a sort of a general edit throughout the draft ordinance. It's not in the paperwork that you have, but that's just an edit that we worked on last night after the board completed their direction to the staff yesterday. Just wanted to advise you of that. It's not a substantial edit. It's just, you know, sort of recognizing that some new department is going to be created to regulate cannabis. It won't be in my shop.
And I would, I would suggest that we give you discretion if you come across something in the ordinance where the or designate or other designated officer or whatever, doesn't make sense that you not put it in.
Right.
Any comments on that? Okay.
So with that, I think we left off on, I don't know if you completed edits to 1795-160. We were spending a quick, big deal time discussing D. Were there any other edits in that section?
Not for me. Anybody else?
No. No.
Get to page 33, I have some.
Yes, I'm on page 33. Does anybody have anything before page 33?
Yes.
Okay.
It starts on page 32. It would be 17.95.160f, which provides that cannabis activities and violation of this chapter shall mean infraction. And I have some questions about that. The first is, what was the penalty under the proposed ordinance that was a subject of the EIR?
It was a misdemeanor and fines were in the amount of $1,000 per day after a reasonable opportunity to correct, as was then required by the government code.
And it was also a misdemeanor under the urgency ordinance?
That's correct.
And what about under the ban?
It's the same, $1,000 per day after a reasonable opportunity to correct.
Okay. Can you explain why the change from a misdemeanor to an infraction and what is the effect of that?
Certainly. In an early meeting, Mr. Maurer, myself, Sheriff DeBisilio, and District Attorney Barbara Yook sat together and were talking about a loose outline of this ordinance. And Barbara Yook, the district attorney, requested that the change be made to have it be an infraction rather than a misdemeanor. And she would have to be the one to explain her rationale for that. It had to do with how she thought representing people ought to function. So that was her recommendation, we adopted it. The effect of that is actually to make the penalties, at least for administrative enforcement, much worse for an illegal cultivator. The way it is currently written, infraction results in a per-plant fine with $100 per plant per day. And there's been a change in state law where the reasonable opportunity to correct, which was a previous requirement under the government code, and we interpret it to be 10 days. So under the ban, under the UO, if you got a citation, you had 10 days to correct before we would start fining you $1,000 per day. There was a change in state law in 2018 that allowed for immediate imposition of fines only with regard to code violations involving illegal cannabis cultivation. And so under the new code and under the new ordinance, even though it's an infraction, a violator is subject to immediate penalties and will generally have much, much higher fines. Because the fines are going to be $100 per plant per day for the first violation. So the larger the violation, the more illegal plants you have, the larger the fine. Whereas before, it didn't matter how large. You could have an acre of illegal cannabis and it's $1,000 a day. Or you could have a quarter acre of illegal cannabis and it's $1,000 a day. Under the, under the proposed ordinance, you have a per-plant fines and the fines are immediately imposed. So it's actually much harsher in terms of fines that would be suffered after administrative enforcement action under this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Before this discussion, I was concerned that the change from a misdemeanor to an infraction would send the wrong signal. And people would misperceive that the county wasn't serious about punishing people and deterring people from breaking the rules. And I think this explanation may help correct any such misperception. Thank you.
Next comment? Anybody have anything else following this on this page?
Is this, under the infraction, is that for personal cultivation as well? Or is that just commercial cultivation?
It would be any violation. So if you had an outdoor growth that was otherwise legal and you had seven plants instead of six, you'd have a $100 fine for that, that seventh plant.
Per day?
Per day.
Okay.
Next.
Well, I have something for 170a on page 33. It just, somehow the drafting got a little confused. And it makes sense if we, after, let's see down about the fourth line where it says chapter 17.98 of the county code, if you just take out would apply and the revocation of which shall be governed by, take that out, put in the word or, then you avoid a double would apply in the same sentence and makes it cleaner. So what amounts to is the, so the entire section would read, this section applies to the denial or revocation of any permit described in this chapter except for appeals from such determinations involving conditional or administrative use permits to which chapter 17.98 of the county code or section 17.90.050 of the county code would apply. One of those deals with conditional use permits and another deals with administrative use permits.
I don't see any problem with that. I guess the only reason we had that was so that we were clear that the revocation. I think it's fine. It's cleaner. Is there consensus?
Yeah, my consensus.
I think we could just lose the last would apply. But it does seem a tad wordy.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, are we, that, then you have this revocation of which shall be governed by only deals with the administrative use permit. So I think it's, it just cleans it up.
I think it's okay.
Okay.
Okay. My next is on page 34, at the top of the page. End of the third line, the, the word may should be shall so that the appellate's written appeal shall state the alleged facts, considerations, or mitigating factors that warrant reversal of the planning director's decision. It just makes sense that they have to say what the problem is so that the planning director can answer it.
The reason we left it as may was, you know, the appellate has the right to provide whatever information they want as part of their appeal. If they don't give us any specifics, then there is, you're right, there's less for us to respond to. But at the same time, that's wholly up to the appellate to provide their argument of why the decision should be overturned.
If you want it that way. I think it's good to start an appellate proceeding with something that states the grounds. Otherwise, what, how are you going to answer? You, your answer would probably, sometimes would be a lot broader than what the grounds would be if they only want to appeal on one.
Item five below says the factual and/or legal grounds for reversal of the planning director's decision. And that is a shall at a minimum, include the following. So the may is probably okay where it is.
Well, then it's inconsistent with that shall.
Well, it says the appeal form shall request at a minimum the following information. Doesn't say they have to provide it.
That's true.
And I would leave it the way it is. If somebody wants to file an appeal, it doesn't state any decent grounds for the appeal to be granted, that's up to them.
Well, I'm thinking more of the planning director that, or designate, that it, you start with an appeal. What's, what are the grounds of the appeal? Here they are. The planning director answers those grounds. If you, if you don't state the grounds to start with, the planning director knows that there are many possible issues that might be raised in this appeal. Does he just not say anything in his response? Or does he or she, you know, try and pick and choose what he or she thinks the appellate has in mind? It's just, just basic appellate practice, is my point of view.
I like it. And I would go with shall. I'd also change the word the appeal form shall require as opposed to request.
I like that.
Because I think you're right. So there are the instances where we've got these appeals and we appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I understand.
Do we have consensus?
I believe we do. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No objection, no objection. As long as the planning director likes it.
Okay. My, my next one is, is the next subsection and D. First, I'll ask the planning director. This would provide for electronic submission of the briefs. And I'm not, I thought we had an earlier comment that you didn't, that this was not going to be permitted or you do not permit it.
The actual appeal needs to be submitted to the county in person. Any additional information, briefs, that's standard practice. We often receive written or email communication.
Okay. Then, I think it'd be cleaner if you say attachments may be delivered in person or by mail to the planning department. And then, or may be submitted electronically pursuant to procedures. Because I mean, if you have delivered in person, then there isn't even a to. In person, the planning department, by mail, is awkward.
Yeah. How about just in person, by mail, or electronically to the planning department?
Yeah, pursuant to procedures. That's fine. And I'm not going to stop at every section, but I do have something with, with E. The next one. My suggestion is, is that, and this deals with the appeal fee. And I know we have a provision that, you know, failure to pay any fee can result in revocation. But we don't have anything that says specifically, no appeal shall be processed without receipt of the appeal fee. And I think that would probably be a good thing to add at the end of that, of the E. Because if you revoke again and files another appeal or doesn't put in the appeals fee, like somehow we need to.
Well, if they don't submit the D, we don't consider it a filed appeal.
That's what I'm, that's what.
We won't process anything.
Well, that's, I'm just making that.
It seems redundant, but it doesn't harm anything. So I'll let the commission decide.
I think it's okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
The way I'm suggesting?
It's fine to explicitly say that the fee is required at the time of the filing.
And that my suggested wording, which is in my memo that was submitted, you know, in the last hearing, no appeal shall be processed without receipt of the appeal fee so that it's clear that that's the dead end.
So is that supposed to add that?
Yes, at the end. My, I'm on page 35. I think I skipped a subsection. Subsection G, at the very bottom, says a copy shall be provided to the planning director, but it has no deadline for when that needs to be done. So my suggestion, as I suggested in my memo, is a copy shall be provided to the planning director with receipt no less than five, five days before the scheduled hearing. So it's the same timing as the hearing officer gave it.
Why not just have a new D? And have it say providing a copy to the planning director? Does the same thing.
I think that's more economical and makes a lot of sense. Did you catch that?
Yeah, so just shift that line over and have D to it. You know, that may have been what was intended and with tractions and numbering, it always gets screwed up, so.
And as Commissioner Wooster suggested, to keep it consistent with A, B, and C, why it'd be providing a copy to the planning director. At the bottom of the page, H, and this I'm not sure about, but if a party requests an appeal and fails to appear, the hearing shall be vacated. Shouldn't we say the appeal shall be vacated? I mean, you vacate a hearing, it's still, the appeal is still somehow in existence.
Well, except it also goes on to say, and the decision of the planning director shall become final. Which would seem to solve that problem.
That would take care of it, yeah. I withdraw that. Okay. I have nothing until page 37. I'm troubled by, I'm looking at the last sentence, which it says, an attorney authorized to practice law in the state of California may represent any party to the appeal. I have no problem with that provision. It's just that the, in the, the staff's comments to my suggestion that we limit who can represent the party, the staff said, well, the party might want to bring in his own expert or something. And I, I understand that, but the way we have it now, it's wide open. And anybody could represent the appellate. And you could end up with a situation where some non-attorney represents, you know, is making a business of representing appellate and is obstreperous and has problems with the hearing officer and all that sort of stuff. I mean, I can picture a person right now. And so I'm suggesting we limit it. So my experience in hearing a lot of these appeals in the past is that many times the owner is not a direct participant in the management, but the property manager has been the person who's representing the owner. So my suggestion is, is that the last sentence be, every party to an appeal shall either appeal in person or be represented by the party's property manager or an attorney authorized to practice law in the state of California.
I wouldn't, I would have trouble with, who's a property manager? Doesn't that leave it open to be anybody again?
I don't think so. I think, I think the hearing officer could say, well, if you had anything to do with this property before last Tuesday? No. It's, it's just, I'm trying to get some sort of limit on this.
Yeah, sure. I mean, there is, as you know, no requirement that it be a lawyer, but.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. I mean, if that's what the planning commission wants.
I guess I'm not sure what you're trying to, you say you want the, the, the party to be here unless they're represented by a property manager or an attorney.
Well, I'm saying whoever's going to appear at the lectern and at the, you know, before the hearing officer. How are we going to let anybody come in and say, "I'm representing this applicant," and have maybe written authorization from the applicant? And you could end up with a, with a can of worms for the hearing officer.
Well, I, I think that, you know, to the benefit of the appellant, they're going to want to have someone that knows what they're talking about. It could be they're represented by a biologist if the reason that the application was denied was because of failure to meet, you know, the biological standards of the state, for example.
But then the owner could stand up and say, "And I'm presenting as my witness, my biologist."
You know, in administrative, I don't think it'd be as much of a problem in this situation, but in, certainly in our administrative enforcement appeals, it was often the case that the actual appellant couldn't speak English. And they would bring in a nephew or, or a son or someone to represent them.
How about a family member? Some, some limitation. I just, I, I, I'm open to suggestions from the commission if nobody's interested in this.
I knew you had indicated that you were concerned about, you know, some, someone being a strep, strepitis?
Yes.
Streperus. Well, we certainly had several attorneys that were obstreperous during some of those previous hearings. So I don't know that limiting it to a certain type of, you know, qualified individual necessarily would prevent that from happening.
I think you could say authorized representative or authorized agent, which is what we do in other dealings with the county.
Well, that just means permission of the applicant. Okay. Anyhow, I'm open for discussion.
I don't think property manager is a descriptive enough to serve your purpose, really.
Well, if, if you did have some obstreperous person decide to make a business out of representing appellants, what, what authority would the hearing officer have to say, "This hearing's over because you're being a jerk" or otherwise control the proceedings? How does that work? Because I haven't been to one of these.
The person is entitled to have their hearing. And it would, and we did frequently have a deputy in the hearings. And if someone was behaving in a way that just prevented the hearing from taking place and they, and they didn't comply with the request of the hearing officer, it could be removed from the room. And then the appellant is left to their own devices in defending themselves.
I, I'm not comfortable limiting the person who could represent the appellant because of the language issue, because he made it an expert there. I would leave it the way it is and not, not limit it.
That's, that's fine with me. I just wanted to raise the issue. Now, let's just leave it. Since I'm not going to be a hearing officer. Okay. The last thing I have, page, well, it goes from page 38 to page 39. So this is subsection F. It's the 5C. Now, we're talking about ex parte communications with a hearing officer. And ex parte, meaning it's not a matter of public knowledge or, or it's not part of the hearing itself. And C says that it, that communications, I'm, I'm reading five now. Communications to a hearing officer from an employee or agent of the county are permissible in any of the following circumstances. And C is, "Communication for the purpose of assistance to the hearing officer from a person who has not served as investigator or advocate or in any capacity in the proceeding of the appellant's application, the pre-adjudicative stage of the enforcement action or the planning director's decision-making process." Problem I see with that is you could have a county employee within the planning department but not previously involved in the case confidentially contact the hearing officer with assistance by giving him a rundown or her, a rundown of problems the planning department's been having in this area or with this person. Or a county employee could feed the hearing officer rumors or unfavorable personal allegations concerning the appellant. And it seems to me this is exactly the type of communications that we want to have, if, if any, to have it public. You don't want the hearing officer to be receiving these sort of communications in private. And I, I would just delete C.
Yeah, that, that actually might be the cleanest thing to do because in any circumstance where such a communication for the purpose of assistance of the hearing officer is kind of covered in D.
Yeah.
The, yeah, I mean, I, I can imagine a situation in subsection C where, for example, in, in our, in our office, no one who, we don't give legal advice to a hearing officer except for in the most general of terms. And it never, ever comes from me because I'm the advocate. So, so if the hearing officer had a technical question about hearing and they wanted to talk to Sarah, they, they could. But, but they all are lawyers, so they can just do their own research. I mean, they're all lawyers.
Or they could do it in a manner where it's disclosed on the record.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Which, I mean, what's the problem? So if you agree to eliminate subsection C and renumber D to C, then I think up in F1 on page 38, I think we would delete, delete the, on the fourth line, that participated in the pre-adjudicative stage of the proceeding. Does that seem to be tailored to dealing with C?
It can also apply to D as well.
Oh. Yeah, well, if you see a, a need for that language, why, let's keep it. First, I suppose we ought to see if everybody agrees to eliminate C.
I'm okay with it.
That's fine.
So if, if you see a reason for that phrase other than taking, anticipating what was going to be in C, then keep that phrase in. Otherwise, I don't think we need it.
Well, I mean, it does, it would authorize subdivision D to have the communication, which would probably be from somebody like IT or, or the administrative office for just actual, technical and practical matters.
And do you, do you see, if we get rid of C, do you see a function for that phrase? Or, or a possible function?
Yeah, I could see it functioning with 5, 5D.
Okay. Well, then let's leave it in. Guess what?
Is there anything else on page 39? On page 40. Anything you want, anybody wants to discuss?
Nope.
Okay. Page 41. We're going to move into the findings, so, all the way up until findings. Okay. That's good. Anything in the findings on page 41? Page 42.
Yeah, I, there's a reference under C, the last sentence, "Despite the rescission of the coal memos." I don't think there's a previous statement of what the coal memos are.
I think it was suggested that that phrase should be struck, and I would agree with that.
Okay.
Anything else on page 42? Page 43.
I, I know people laugh when we start talking about commas being important, but subsection H, the sentence about in the middle of that subsection, it says, "While these cultivation sites were unlawful under principles of permissive zoning." I think what's intended is, "While these cultivation sites were unlawful, comma, under principles of permissive zoning and county code so-and-so, comma, some growers." If everybody agrees with that, I've got one more suggestion.
That would be fine.
Yeah, I agree with the comma.
I didn't understand, the last sentence, "The adoption of this ordinance will serve to clarify that the county expressly intends to prohibit all cannabis cultivation within the county except cultivation protected under state law and those additional cultivation activities described in this ordinance." It sounds like we have things that are not protected under state law.
So the state law provides for...
Personal.
Personal cultivation indoor. That's the minimum basement level of what is allowed. Anything else is subject to local control. And we're saying that it's all prohibited except for what we've allowed in this ordinance, which is consistent with state law.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that, see, I was reading those additional cultivation activities as being not protected under state law. How about change protected into required?
Well, cultivation isn't required under state law. You're not required...
Yeah, okay. I thought we were, well, okay. Required of, to be permitted by the county under state law. If, nobody else sees a problem here?
It could say personal cultivation or private cultivation.
Well...
Or required, almost sounds like you have to do it.
Just a moment, everybody.
Now that Commissioner Ladish has focused on this sentence, what it seems to say is that this ordinance intends to prohibit all cultivation except that prohibited protected under state law and those additional cultivation activities described in this ordinance. The ordinance in definitions describes some things as manufacturing and so forth. I think it should read, "And those additional cultivation activities allowed by or permitted by this ordinance."
I agree. And, and I, I do think we should make it clear that the only thing protected under state law is the personal cultivation.
Those additional cultivation activities permitted under this ordinance.
Yes, but then there's, as the chair points out, it's still a problem with the protected under state law.
Well, the cultivation is protected under state law is six plants indoors per resident.
Right, personal cultivation.
Personal cultivation.
I think we just said that, personal.
It could say personal cultivation as protected under state law.
Because state law doesn't protect. It, it defers to the local jurisdiction all other cannabis activity. The cities and counties have the right to totally ban everything in the county except for six plants indoors.
But protected is the word that you're using. And what counsel is suggesting makes it clear.
I don't know, maybe so, except personal cultivation as protected under state law and those additional cultivation activities permitted by this ordinance.
That sounds good.
Correct.
Makes sense.
I think that's where we're all trying to get.
Yes.
Anything else on page 43? Page 44? Page 45?
Yes, subsection S starts, "The knowledge that county staff is overwhelmed by the application burden." I think that is, should be, was.
Yes.
Speed up since the other members of the commission would say, "Sounds good," or "It's wonderful."
Well, I think the county staff still is overwhelmed. It hasn't, we haven't taken care of that problem of being overwhelmed yet.
But not by an application burden because there is currently no application burden.
Right.
So was seems the appropriate.
Well, it, it is appropriate because the, the sentence has to do what happened in the past. And the verb is incentivized. So was is appropriate here.
I think if it's to be changed to past, I'm not sure where the direction is. If change to past tense, we also need to change whose applications had not been processed on the third line, have not been processed because we're no longer processing applications.
Right.
Well, if we look at the paragraph above, it's in the past tense. The past tense seems most appropriate.
Yes.
Anything else on page 45? Page 46? Page 47?
I have something on FF. Anybody before that? FF talks about comprehensive prohibition of certain commercial activities, including but not limited to, and then I'm going to cut down to, "Commercial transport of cannabis other than self-transport is proper to address the risks and adverse impacts." Yet on page 11, under section 17.95.050B, we clearly permit outside distributors to come in and be on our roads. So I think commercial transport of cannabis other than self-transport should be eliminated. of cannabis other than self-transport should be eliminated. Or rephrased, if you mean something other than that.
So we're not allowing a transport license based out of this county, but we cannot prohibit an out-of-county transporter to transport material to or from the county.
Sometimes you sound more like an attorney than I do.
That's what I thought I understood.
I didn't.
So under, under the state law, a local jurisdiction cannot prohibit transport through or to or from the county. We can only prohibit the company operating out of this county. And so I think you're right that we may want to rephrase that, but I'm not sure exactly how to do that.
Okay.
Because of the convoluted nature of the transport rules.
Just as it is way, it looks in conflict with that earlier section, and then.
We could just add after the parentheses, based in Calaveras County.
Yeah, I was gonna say this, I mean, it could get kind of wordy, but we could say something like, yeah, that's probably. And commercial transport of cannabis other than self-transport by a business base, I mean, yeah, there's no succinct way of putting.
Based, based in Calaveras County.
Or Calaveras County-based business.
Yeah, there you go, Calaveras County-based commercial transport.
Right.
Nice to have you there.
Wait a minute, where does the, where does that phrase go?
That's right before commercial transport of cannabis, so it'd be Calaveras County-based commercial.
Or maybe just transport of cannabis other than self-transport by a commercial entity based in Calaveras County, I know that's wordier, but it's more specific, it's clearer.
Okay, shall we go with that?
Do, did you get that, Peter?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Um, so may, and transport of cannabis other than self-transport, or maybe you wouldn't even need self-transport at that point, well, I guess you would, so, and transport of cannabis other than self-transport by a commercial entity based in Calaveras County, or a commercial business based in Calaveras County.
Entity is good, because.
Yeah.
I think I'd keep commercial transport to start with.
She did. That's, that's fine, yeah, I guess we could have it in both places.
I mean, if we're gonna have it wordy.
And commercial transport of cannabis other than self-transport by a commercial entity based in Calaveras County.
That's clear.
Yep.
No, I'm not getting it. So it's gonna read as it is, other than, other than self-transport by a commercial entity based in Calaveras County? That's not allowed.
No, other than self-transports, self-transport's still in the parents, and then by an entity based out of Calaveras County, so that's only modifying the commercial transport.
So it is, it is prohibited, I mean, that's what we're talking about, isn't it?
Oh, I wonder if we just wanna say by an entity based, rather than a commercial entity.
That's, I think we only need probably one commercial, it can go in either place, wherever.
Yeah, I'd have it, I'd have it at the beginning, commercial transport sets the
That's fine.
Contact.
Now it's an entity.
Yes.
You should see how tiny the writing is on her phone, and she can read it, because I have very powerful contacts. Anything further on this item, or we go on to the next page? Page forty-eight? Page forty-nine? Page fifty?
I would suggest we add finding RR that would state, a system of regulated commercial cannabis cultivation in Calaveras County will generate tax revenue under chapter three point five six of the county code, revenue that will be available to the extent appropriated by the Board of Supervisors to support the enforcement of this chapter and the elimination of cannabis activities that are prohibited by it. I think that's a finding of fact that is cogent to our considerations.
I don't think it's a finding of fact, I think it's a prophecy perhaps, or a prediction that may or may not be accurate, and I've got a question about that, too. How is the tax situation gonna be handled? I mean, this ordinance doesn't purport to do that, and I understand it's gonna be different than it was under the urgency ordinance.
So the tax ordinance is separate, it's in title III, I believe, and it currently applies to dispensaries or retailers only, because those are the only legally authorized cannabis activities in the county. If this is adopted, then that ordinance applies again to any new activity. So the, the ban and the, the end of the urgency ordinance did not affect the tax, the tax law at all, it just simply ended the businesses from which we could collect that tax.
But how is the tax figured? It used to be on a, the amount of square footage that was allowed by the permit.
So the way the tax was set up, it was to be based on square footage until such time as the track and trace program is in place, and then it will be based on volume. So as soon as the track and trace program is in place and the recording by the state of how much volume is generated, then it shifts over from a square footage-based tax to a volume tax.
And track and trace gets put into effect by the state?
Yes.
And I, I think it is a statement of fact, and it's not a prophecy, in that it does say to the extent appropriated by the Board of Supervisors, so recognizes that goes into the general fund and the Board of Supervisors determines where it's gonna go, but as the sheriff said the other day, he would be very happy if all of a sudden more money were coming in to, to, through the, this measure, because he would expect to get a fair chunk of it. I'm not, I'm not prophesying, prophesizing, it's, this will become available to the extent appropriated by the Board of Supervisors to support the enforcement of this chapter.
The statement of fact is really only that the voters approved the taxation of cannabis.
Well, the last, last time we went through this under the urgency ordinance, people paid taxes, and then some of the growers sued to get it all back, and that litigation is still pending, so I'm not comfortable predicting that there's gonna be great volumes of tax money collected here.
I don't see great volumes in my statement of fact.
So again, the only fact is that the voters approved the taxing of cannabis, measure C, I believe.
And I think that's already covered.
That, that, I think that would be an appropriate thing to say here, I don't think we can speculate on, as people pointed out many times during other hearings, on what the Board of Supervisors will choose to do, we can't control how they allocate that money.
And I'm not, I'm not prophesying, I mean, okay, anyhow.
And that's covered by finding you already.
Is it you?
Yes. Anybody else have anything to say on that?
No.
No.
So it sounds like no support for an additional finding.
I guess so.
Okay, so before we move on to taking a look at the environmental documents, and seeing if any modifications we made have any bearing on what we've said in the past, I am still of the opinion that no further public testimony is required today, or will be beneficial to anyone. However, I'd like to hear from the commissioners.
Yeah, I'd also like to point out that we've received this draft, which has changes in it, and I've gone through it, and there are other things that need to be pointed out, some typos, some things we haven't considered, et cetera, starting back on page one, you know, and.
Anything substantive, are we gonna be talking about commas at this point?
Not, there's some substantive.
Okay, so.
But, but commas are important, right?
No, no, I'm not, so you're suggesting that we should start back through, I think all the commissioners have had an opportunity to look at all those items, so you have, items that you believe are significant enough for us to discuss again.
Yep, or, or that we haven't discussed yet.
Okay. Let's.
Starting on the first page, the, is the staff withdrawing its suggestion that we take medical out of the title?
Probably no, no, that should be struck, that was oversight.
Okay, and that by itself does not mean that seventeen point nine one now covers anything other than medical, it's just that you're anticipating that that might be amended.
Yes.
I have no problem with that. So the, the chapter title for chapter seventeen point nine five, the parenthetical phrase at the bottom, medical, would be taken out.
Right.
Was in an earlier recommendation from staff.
Yep, but it wasn't in this draft. Okay, page twelve. This, subsection five, it's just a matter of taking a word out, cannabis plants and any cannabis produced by the plants shall be kept in a locked space, take out or, locked space fully enclosed by security fencing or a locked structure. Page twenty-two. It's another, having to do with the security. L, whenever the premises contain cannabis, the cultivation site shall be fully enclosed by security fencing, and shall be securely locked. This would include interior grows, so I think we ought to say shall be enclosed by security fencing or a locked structure.
Makes sense.
Okay, is, is everybody in agreement with that?
You're, you're right, it does apply to both, that's good.
Okay, then page twenty-four, subsection S.
Hold on, you did say a locked structure, or a, or a structure, and shall be securely locked?
That's fine. So page twenty-four, subsection S, third line from the end, it talks about which cannabis is cultivated pursuant to this section, and I think it probably, probably should be chapter, but. Let's see, are we in?
I think you're right.
It just seems to me that. Makes sense, okay?
Yes. Good editing.
Okay, now, now this is, this is something we need to discuss. We agreed last time that the, the, there were several revised versions regarding the posting of the permits, and on page twenty-five, subsection three, it has an assumption in there, I think, that, that you can have several premises enclosed with a single fence, and that's something we hadn't discussed before, and I, I know it's, there are other sections that say that premises have to be separated, and, and, I, I, I'm not sure that we, if we have a co-location situation, and we happen to have five acres that are all together, we are allowing one fence around all of those, and then somehow expecting the growers to separate their, their premises and their cultivation sites so that the, as required for the law enforcement officers to be able to tell where one stops and the other begins, this is just something we hadn't, we hadn't considered, and this, this section, at least I read it, if multiple premises are contained within a single fenced cultivation site, all permities with premises on that cultivation site shall additionally post the permit within their premises' boundaries, and I don't know what the premises' boundaries would be, and.
So, so the, we require, and the state licensing requires, that the premises be identified on the site plan, and so it's a distinct area, so if you have more than one grower on a single parcel, each individual licensee or permity will have their own premises.
But how do you envision this separation to occur, particularly if it's all within one fenced area?
There's gonna be grower A here, grower B here, grower C there, they have to be separated, by law, they have to be.
Okay.
And there will be a demarcation somehow, we don't really care how it is, but this is grower's A, this is grower B here, and that's why we're saying, if, there's a requirement that you have to put a fence in between those, as long as the perimeter is fenced, so people can't get into it, and so that's why we're, we're suggesting that this, that they clearly identify, this is grower's A's plants over here, grower's B plants are here, we want to make sure that that's posted, not only on the outside of the fenced area, with intent not only on the outside of the fenced area with 10 feet of the entrance so that law enforcement or code enforcement officers can identify, okay, here's where we're at. But also internal, if the case is that there's one large area and they're within the single fenced area, that they demarcated where their cultivation is.
Okay, and that, and you feel for enforcement purposes that we don't need to say how they need to be separated and...
We didn't feel that was necessary, no.
And I believe the state requirements talk about how to delineate the premises.
Right.
Or the individual cultivation site within the big cultivation site.
Okay, so if, if there aren't any other concerns?
Not here.
Page 26. Easy things. Subsection EE is followed by subsection HH and II, so we need to get those back to FF and GG.
That's word. When we clean this all up, it will be correct.
Right.
I spent a half hour trying to fix that, and I finally came up.
Oh, well, I see. It's, it's that formatting problem.
Yeah, it's formatting.
Okay. Then the EE is the well provisions that we considered last time. And at that point, we were assured that we're not going to have thousands and thousands of gallons of water on the, on the ground. Members of the public have come forward with the actual math. And it works out so that you have, if you, if you pumped only 10 gallons a minute, 24 hours of that would be 14,400 gallons of water for one test for one well. And I doubt that anybody's going to have a tank that's going to take 14,000 gallons of water. So I, I am concerned about, and a member of the public raised this in the context of whether we should have considerations of this in the, in the addendum for the EIR. I did look to mitigation measures 3.5-3, which actually provides for short-duration pumping tests to assess production capacity and water levels.
Can I, I did some research on that too last night to see what that was meant by short-term.
Uh huh, yeah, good.
And I, it's a long document. I have my computer if you want to read it, but short-term is 24 hours.
It is 24.
That's the minimum. Most pump tests, it says, run from 24 to 72 hours. In addition, with the math, I also got the letter. You can do... We, we have a lot of concern about the water in the tests. But if you look at the water that the plants are going to use in a one-year period with a one-acre grows, potential of 190 sites, the plants themselves are going to use 148,200,000 gallons of water. In a three-year period, that's 444,600,000 gallons of water. Now, I know in the letter we got, it says, well, you're going to, these pump tests, if you're doing 10 gallons a minute with 190 sites for three years, that's 24.6 million gallons. That comes out to 0.55% of the water that's being used by the plants. So we're not talking about a large amount in comparison to what the plants are using. We're so concerned about what little, what's going to be used in the pump tests, but we're not concerned at all about how much water the plants are taking out of the aquifers.
Well, no, we are, because that's why we have pump tests, to make sure we're not...
Well, but we're trying to, we're trying to get rid of the pump tests.
But the... I appreciate your doing the research on the short duration, because that was the question I had. The key thing is, in your statement, is that the plants are using that water. These tests, to the extent you don't have the tanks available to store the water, it's going to be
Right, but there is, currently, I looked it up to see if there was any other method for determining the effect on an aquifer and the effect on additional wells. And at this present time, there is no other way to determine that. And the mitigation requires that we do determine that. In fact, we didn't put in there that you have to test the, the other wells that could be affected. That's in the mitigation requirement as well. That the other wells have to be tested for drawdown to see if you're affecting neighboring wells. And that we didn't put in there. That really should be in there. You can store some of that water in tanks. But we also heard, I believe it was Lisa Medina, said that, you know, in reality, a lot of that water that's dumped out on the ground is going to wind up back down in the aquifer. Not all of it, but a lot, you know, percentage of that does run. So you're not losing all that water. So you can store some of it. Some of it goes down in. But in order to satisfy the mitigation of 3.5.3, you have to do these tests. And it recommends three years. I know we didn't want to go with what C C W D said, that that's not long enough. But the minimum is doing this for three years. And the reason you have to do it, the reason you have to do a test for that length of time is you have to stress the well. The only way you can know if that well is affecting other wells is you have to put stress on it. And you can't put stress on it in an hour and two hours. You have to do it over, like I said, anywhere from 24 to 72 hours on a, on a pump test. There's just no way around that right now. Someday, there might be, but there isn't. And the tests, when they do that, the document was 50-some pages, so I couldn't print it up for everybody. But having been on these tests, there's, there's charts and graphs that are drawn up because you, you have to sample the well, the water level every so many minutes, and then it's, you know, after a certain amount of time, it goes every 30 minutes, and it goes every hour during that time to, to be able to graph out the actual effect it's having on, on the well. And you have to test the additional wells outside to see how they're being affected. And then it's all graphed out, and that's how the, they get, the hydrologist gets the information that they can calculate. They have calculations then that they can calculate how well that aquifer is going to respond to that type of pumping. So I know there's concern about the water. You know, get tanks, tank what you can. But what goes back in onto the ground, a lot of that is going to go back into the aquifer anyway. That's why we have rules where you can't have a septic system within a certain distance of a well because that water that's going into your leach field is going down and eventually is getting in, and it has to filter out a certain amount. But it really, we talked about this as lost and wasted water. It's not in the long, in the big picture.
We're all on the same earth. You're right. You know, it might be the neighbors, or it might be downstream. But it is water that's, that's was going to be coming from this well and is no longer going to be servicing this property. In your research, did it come up with, why do this three months each year? Because I know that the idea is to see whether there's a consecutive three-year diminishment in the, in the well recovery, but I...
Well, each pump test, you want to determine when that well is going to be used at the greatest... Because it's not a one, you know, you're not, you're not watering those plants for the entire year. You're watering them during, that's the peak time where they're using the most amount of water. That's why you want to test it during that time. Because that's when the greatest effect could occur on the aquifer.
It just, it just seems to me that if you could decide pretty accurately what at least one of the peak months would be, and I would guess, since we are, I think we're talking about what? August, September, and October, was it?
Well, I think that the biggest problem we have is we're not, we're not hydrologists. That's a specific expertise. And I'm sure, I would, I would imagine that when they came up with the mitigation, they consulted hydrologists on what the correct way to mitigate that would be. For us to try to change that and say, we want to come up with something different, because really what it boils down to, it's not, it's not the water going on the ground. That's not really what we're getting letters and concerns about. It's, it's the wallet. There, people are worried about what it's going to cost them to do that test. But that's, unfortunately, when, when it comes to environmental things, you have to mitigate it, that can't be our, our concern. Our concern has to be what's best for our water supply.
So I...
I don't know. Do we have anybody that has ever had to have a pump test done or had any expertise on that? I don't know if we do.
So I do believe that we had a pretty extensive discussion of this last time, and that we're not moving that discussion forward.
Yep.
Today, we're repeating ourselves, and I want to thank both of you. I also spent time last night reading the old environmental document and looking at that well section and seeing exactly what it said. And while I would love to come up with an alternative that I felt was more protective of the neighbors and less of a burden on anyone growing or using the water, I don't think we are prepared to come up with that alternative here today. So I believe that what the planning commission might do is flag this item for when it goes to the board. And maybe there's the potential for someone with more expertise than any of us to look at, are there alternatives possible? I mean, it looks like, at least to a one evening's worth of, of research, there was no obvious alternative available. So I, I... How does everybody feel about that?
Yeah, I think we're back to where we were last, last meeting. But I do, there's another provision involving wells, but it's just typos and this sort of thing. And that is page 31. The citation at the beginning of that section to HH should be to EE.
With all the renumbering, we'll have to go back and double-check the...
Everything, yeah. And, and at the end of, of C2, the site to, to 070H should be to I as the current.
Sir, what was that last one, the very, the end of that?
At the very, very end, H should be I.
Great, thank you.
And then C1, to be consistent with the, with the mitigation measure. I think we just need to, instead of, I'm going to read it. "The average water level between August and October in all wells being used as a source of water for commercial cannabis cultivation activities has not decreased over a period of three consecutive years." I'd like to use the language from the mitigation measure, "has not been in continuous decline" over a period of three consecutive years. As I said, you could argue, oh, well, the third year is lower than the first year, so it's decreased. Well, it has to be in continuous decline.
I don't think that's appropriate because you actually could have a... I'm just not sure that we can change that wording. Is that, that's the exact wording from here?
It's, it's, let's see.
Continuous decline over three years. Does that mean every month it declines?
No, every, every, the test each year.
There's only two...
Three, three years, three tests.
So, but, but you only have decline over a change, so you only have two opportunities for change.
There'd be the initial test and then three follow-up tests, so there would be three.
Yeah, the very first one with the application, and then for the three years. Which could happen in the first year, the first two, right?
"If continuous decline of water levels is observed for a period of three consecutive years in the source water supply well," is the, the language that's used.
I think that's the safest thing to...
I think that makes sense, actually. You could have a decrease from one year to next because of drought or other conditions. Someone else puts a well in that's affecting that well. But if you see it continuous decline, that shows a trend as opposed to a one-time decrease.
That's what I was trying to get at. Okay, and that's, I think this is the last thing, and this would be, this would be somewhat contentious. Page 32. Subsection C. Which we had debated about last time. We have eliminated suggestions and, and staff suggestions on the basis that things are superfluous. And I think the last sentence that was added at our last meeting is superfluous. It's a, the private party's right to sue, bring a civil action for nuisance is completely separate from this this ordinance. And the, just as a reference was taken out because it was superfluous, the reference to the dispensary ordinance was taken out at the suggestion of Commissioner Wooster because it was superfluous, because it has nothing to do with this ordinance. I'd say the same thing applies to this last sentence. And it's up to the private parties and the courts to determine any nuisance liabilities.
We spent, what, a half an hour on this? And this is what we came up with, and now the suggestion is to go back and do it all over again. I don't think it's superfluous. If I thought it was superfluous, I wouldn't have suggested. And it makes it perfectly clear what you think the law is, is in fact what this ordinance is going to provide. People might have different opinions on what the effect of this ordinance is without that sentence. And I want to make, make it clear that this ordinance does not affect those rights. That's all this does. You say it's unnecessary? I think it is.
I applaud your use of the word "affect," because if, if we're going to keep this section, we should change, replace the word "limit" with the word "effect." Because limit is, we're starting to take sides there. So two questions for the rest of the commission. Whether we should have the sentence in there at all? If we do, should we say that this, neither shall this chapter be read, interpreted, or construed to affect any right of a private party to employ any remedy at all, law or equity with respect to nuisance?
I don't think it matters.
You don't think it matters?
I don't think changing "limit" to "affect" matters.
I don't think having the sentence in there matters, actually. After we left that night, and I thought about it, I, we don't make statements about what we're not affecting or limiting anywhere else except this. But I think it was getting late, and we were all discussing it and looking for a way to address all the concerns about this. I don't feel strongly one way or another. I do believe it's not necessary to protect anybody's rights. I don't think we can take those rights away from anyone anyway.
Well, other people might have a different view, and I would say you could say, make the same comment with respect to the first sentence. With respect to the... same comment with respect to the first sentence, with respect to the first sentence.
I was suggesting that we eliminate this whole subsection. I'd be happy with that.
I think that this language actually came out of the urgency ordinance originally, and it probably was in the proposed ordinance that was subject to the EIR, but I don't know that. I think it should be left just the way we had it last time.
I agree.
I agree with Commissioner Wooster on this one.
Well, wait a minute. One last thing.
We just had three people agree to leave it the way it was.
I'm sorry, just let me get a last pitch in. We shouldn't take sides by saying that it's not going to be read, interpreted, or construed to limit any right of a private party. That is an implication that we are saying, nudge, nudge, wink, wink, look at this.
Wasn't, yeah, but wasn't written in there because it was the dual, duality of it. So it's saying the county is not being limited to, neither is a private party. So it's paralleling the work-
It's whether this chapter would be read to limit any right of any private party. And you say "affect," then it's neutral.
Chair, just when we have a consensus of three to keep it, why are we continuing to argue it?
Right, so are there, the staff or legal counsel have any comments on this before we leave it?
Well, I've heard that there are three votes to keep it the way it is, so whatever the commission wants to do, we beat the force pretty hard to have it leave last week.
Yeah, I feel like we should just move on.
Thank you.
Are we done with the ordinance at this moment? So let's take a 10-minute, well, let's come back at a quarter to 11:00. Let's take a quick break. Commissioner Henderson, I'm going to push the button.
So I'd like to find out from the other commissioners how they would like to proceed from here. As I mentioned, I don't see a need for additional public comment on these items, but I'd like to hear from each of you. And if you would like to hear from the public, would you like to hear before or after the commission discusses the environmental document?
I would like to hear from the public before.
I think that would be fine.
I also agree.
I would like to also hear from the public because I think they've been sitting here and hearing us battle back and forth, and I'd like to hear what they have to say.
So this is going to be your opportunity, most likely the last opportunity, to speak to the Planning Commission on this item. So, guys want to go ahead and come up? We'll, you'll have three minutes to speak to the, any changes made to the ordinance and the environmental concerns.
Okay, actually, I think when this meeting was noticed, public comment was five minutes.
No, that is for the general public comment at the beginning of a regularly scheduled meeting where we allow for items not on the agenda to be discussed, so not for specific testimony on this ordinance.
Well-
Also, we've already had public comment on this item, so this is just kind of at the chair's discretion.
Yeah, no, I understand that, except for the, since the public comment was allowed, then there's been three days of, and each day, in two of the days, new information was offered by Commissioner Ladish that the public wasn't able to respond to or didn't even have in advance. I mean, we had it here, sitting here, but we didn't have it in advance even to consider. So that's basically the issue. I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, the whole idea of these meetings, the whole idea of an EIR, the whole idea of all of this stuff is to get the public's input, to give the public information, especially in this stuff, and you're not doing it. So it's just offensive to us. We are the people, remember, the same as you are, so that's all.
You are the people, and we'd like to give you three minutes to tell us your most important information.
I mean, that's really the bottom-line issue. Okay, so, based on Commissioner Ladish's, let me, I'll say, I stand here today to raise the following point concerning a secret problem associated with Commissioner Ladish's 912 in 19 changes to the new proposed 17.9 regulation ordinance. Many of Planning Commissioner Ladish's proposed changes to the ordinance would eliminate or weaken mitigation measures that the EIR concluded were feasible and necessary to reduce environmental impacts to less than significant levels. For example, Planning Commissioner Ladish's suggested change to Section 1795.060B11 regarding greenhouse gas emissions reductions and offsets would weaken mitigation measure 3.2-3. The proposed change to Section 1795.090EE regarding fossil fuel-powered equipment would nullify mitigation measure 3.2-2, and the proposed change to Section 1795.090GG regarding well monitoring would weaken mitigation measure 3.5-3. The elimination of these mitigation measures would be a change in the project that would involve significant environmental impacts related to greenhouse gases and groundwater, which would require the preparation of a subsequent environmental impact report under CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Montgomery, District 3. I have three minutes. So, okay, I'm worried about the mitigation issue. We don't have any mitigation in Calaveras County. We don't even know where all the damage is. So the idea of mitigation, I think, is just null and void, and we need to really look at that as compared to how we're evaluating the EIR. There are significant changes. It's old. It was for a proposed regulation that we don't even look at now. It has nothing to do with what we're doing now, and we are in violation of CEQA if we do not do and do EIR. That's just the facts. It is not the opinion of the attorney that wrote a letter to Mr. Maurer. It is backed by case law that he did and she did cite. Background checks, I think the sheriff needs to handle that. I don't like the misdemeanor going down to an infraction. It really does send the wrong message, and I understand what they're saying, but I also understand how that works. Having one hearing officer is completely, I believe, ineffective. It's better to have an elected body to hear appeals. One hearing officer can be influenced. It's just not a good idea. They need to only have permits, permits to grow, no validation, no administrative plan, no provisional permit, no conditional use permits, no special plans. They cannot grow till they have an actual permit. We need to do a better job of inspections. Our environmental people are not going on inspections. We have no idea. Sabrina tells you that she's probably been exposed to a neurotoxin. One of these guys who I saw was laughing. That is not okay. We have no idea what's out there. It's not okay. Me, I have suited up in those bunny suits, and you better believe I don't want to be around environmental toxins. We are sending our people out just in that kind of conditions. It's not okay. Self-distribution's not okay. That removes a link in the chain of custody that is wrong. You are having the fox watch the chickens. You cannot have a grower distribute his own product. You have to have, removing that is nonsensical. It is not efficacy for the patient, and you are doing the public a disservice if you do that. We also need to worry about fencing, an eight-foot fence. We didn't talk, is that a chain link fence? What is it? Eight feet, not six feet. Those plants are huge. It better be wood or wood-like material, not an eight-foot fence. I can hop a six-foot fence right now, two steps, my legs over and down. Okay, duty versus liability. I'm really worried about putting, taking liability out of there in this document. And you need to ask yourself last, are you going to direct Peter Maurer to break the law? That's exactly what you're doing if you don't do a new EIR or a supplemental EIR. You have no reason to do an addendum. It puts you at risk. It does you a disservice. I thank you, each and every one of you, believe it or not, I thank each and every one of you for your service. I know you're trying your very best. Have a good day.
Trevor Whitkey. So, the project as proposed under the draft EIR that was circulated over, I believe, two years ago now at this point, considered a project as described, it would include 395 acres of cultivation, 25% of parcel area, RR zoning, and it would allow cultivation on acres as small, or on parcels as small as two acres with a setback of 30 feet. I believe every one of the recommendations that Commissioner Ladish made actually increases or mitigates the overall, sorry, those are two different terms. So, his proposals mitigate the environmental impacts, they do not increase the environmental impacts. He increased, proposed increasing the setback to, I believe, 200 feet. The setbacks that have been proposed are far greater than the 30 feet that were considered under the draft EIR. This would substantially reduce the odor impacts associated with the project as assumed under and analyzed under the EIR. There's also the overall acreage canopy that would be county-wide under this new ordinance is capped at about 190 acres, I believe, and it was believed under the previous EIR to be around 390 acres that would be converted into canopy space. This is a clear mitigation. Again, the addendum seems appropriate given the fact that there are numerous mitigations that reduce overall canopy size, increase setback, and limit the odor impacts. There's been a lot of talk about water impacts. The water impacts would be increased through the mitigation proposal. We heard from Environmental Health that they believed that a test at the beginning of the season and a test at the end of the season would be the most desirable mitigation because we would be able to actually analyze the impact of a full season of growing by seeing what the starting point was and then the ending point and how much the actual impact of the cultivation would have on the aquifer or the, I mean, it's not even aquifers, they're fractured rock water basins. So these, considering all of these various factors, I believe that the county is well within its purview to use a mitigated declaration. There's also good case law here. Bauman versus the city of Petaluma in 1986 stated that the limitations on requiring SEIRs are in place because, quote, "in-depth review has already occurred. Time for challenging sufficiency of the original EIR has long since expired, and the question is whether the circumstances have changed enough to justify repeating a substantial portion of the process." The analysis has already been done on every single impact that's been identified in this letter by Schut mainly and Weinberger, so I think the addendum's sufficient.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you. You guys have really stepped up to the plate. I know you get a lot of complaining on both sides. There was a lot of instances where, certain cases, people like me, a lot of people that I know, were wrongfully taken out of the system, and I know that you guys have made efforts in order to make sure that people who were within good standing, did all the right things, paid all their fees and so on, will be able to continue forward. So first and foremost, on behalf of me and probably two dozen people who do deserve it, good players in the community, thank you. Reason I'm up here is I see a few problems with a lot of things, things that will really mess us up as a county. The first one is we keep talking about this well test and everything like that. I'm just going to give you guys a few numbers, okay? Because that's, I'm a math person, you can't fudge numbers and still make it make sense. 53,300, and that is rounding down. That is the amount of gallons that I will produce in 24 hours. I know you hear a lot of people talking about five gallons, six gallons. They're probably not cultivators, okay? My well hit water at 50 feet, I went down another 420. I'm almost at 500 feet, I produce 37 gallons a minute, and believe it or not, I know a lot of you think that's a lot, it's not. There's people in this room, even people on the opposite side that have more than I do. At 20, at about half of that, you're producing 5.7, call it 5.8 million gallons of water in one day. You want to do that four times, and that's assuming it's only 20. I've seen wells for agriculture that produce 80, 150, do the math. I mean, you want to do that four times a day. And it's, I understand you're talking about over a year, but in one day, you have reduced Calaveras' water supply by almost 6 million gallons. That's huge. That's over 180 million bathtubs. That's a lot. That's a lot, okay? Second thing I'd like to point out is there's been a lot of talk with CUPs and zoning and everything else. Let me just give you a quick, a few numbers real quick while I can. 900,000 square feet, that's what I have. That's bigger than any Walmart, any, whatever, okay? I might be RR, but I live in Mountain Ranch, and I think that there are certain cases that should be a case-by-case individual process. For instance, in Mountain Ranch, if you have 20 acres of RR, it might as well be 20 acres of ag or whatever the case may be. I have more than the proposed setback to begin with. I never have any problems with neighbors. I never have any problems with anything like that. It should be a nuisance thing. If you're going to allow people to play and you're going to tell people if you have 11 acres and you get a CUP, why wouldn't you allow somebody with 20 acres who is an RR and in an appropriate place where you do not bother people to have those same freedoms that we have? That's all I'm going to say about it, you know? Just please be fair, and you guys have been so far. Remember the water issue. We only have so much. We've been in a drought since 2011. Don't put us back, okay? Also, big space, keep it that way. Thank you.
Still, good morning. My name is Ann Hill from District 2. There are nine growers going to be above me if these people are still here. Nine growers. The, how to transport in and out, the policing of this, you can't police the in and out of these guys bringing their box trucks in and out. You don't know what they're taking in and out. We watch it on our road. Nobody knows. They're not paying taxes on it. The taxation, it didn't work last time, and if you want to know, contact Higginluber. He's saying in Colorado, they don't get any taxes. This is ridiculous. The police can't use it, can't be in the general fund, the DA can't use any of it because it's a federal illegal item. They cannot use the money from it. Wake up. And the last time around, the sheriff, like I said, and the DA didn't get any because they can't use it because it's illegal. And this five acres, thought it was 20 acres. Growers are what, ABC as you parcel it off and the fencing, how many more animals are they going to kill? The deer, the squirrel, the birds. Let's make it eight foot. Let's make it a 10-foot. Let's keep the animals safe. They're more important than that stinking product of pot. Also, the consumption of water, I am so glad that Trent brought it up and that has done his homework on the quantity of water used. When the wells go dry, they go dry, period, until they end up getting more water sometime down the line with a heavier snowpack. Also, can you define the total acreage in the county? How much acreage is going to actually be used in the county? And the nuisance liability, you want to send it back to the Board of Supervisors. Who is going to be in charge of the nuisance? The nuisance value is the fact that the pot is growing, it's growing right now, they are actually harvesting it right now, it is still up and down the roads. People are not honest about it. These growers are not honest, period. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Aurora Weatherby, District 5, and I apparently missed the first part of this meeting because today, when we're going through the changes that Mr. Ladish wants to discuss, I discovered that I only have 38 pages. I don't have the full 40 pages, so I was kind of lost there. Some of the changes, I feel that I have been able to review- Some of the changes, I feel that I have been able to review at my own leisure at home. It seems to me to want to favor the growers. It doesn't want to consider people like me. Mr. Henderson said he didn't mind the odor of aroma of marijuana in a residential, rural residential setting. I'm in a rural residential setting, and I object to it because it keeps me from sitting on my own patio. When the wind blows, it comes right up that canyon and it's not pleasant at all. The other question I have is at the board meeting yesterday, I felt that they were rude to some of the speakers that were speaking, especially District Attorney Yook and UnderSheriff Macedo. It's like they don't want you to talk, they cut you off. So, questions I had was what is Mr. Lattish's ability to be able to rewrite these rules that Mr. Maurer and I assume attorneys wrote? And then my other question is if any of you have or have had any vested interest, financial interest in commercial marijuana grows? Because some of the things I think were discussed here shows a real bias, especially on Mr. Henderson's side. He seems to favor the growers, and I feel Mr. Lattish does as well, and sometime comments you have made, made me ask this question. And I would like an answer to those. The other thing is $3.5 million, major C money that hasn't been collected by the county. I asked that question at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and the answer I got was, well, not very much. Well, not very much is not an answer to me, a taxpayer. I pay my property tax, my property tax pays for your salaries. I need to be represented here. Thank you.
Good morning. I wanted to make a comment about the portion of the previous initial meeting where, or maybe it was just the last, the second of the three, where you were talking to the sheriff and the, it was very difficult to be the butt of a joke from the commissioner and half of the gallery regarding the Butte Fire and everything we lost, and we did that during the Butte Fire. We burned all the pot, and it was just one big joke, and, well, it's been four years, and it's been incredibly difficult, and to be chastised and laughed at in this public forum is, kind of shows the disdain that I was talking about in the first place that we need to overcome and try and make this a beneficial thing. I think opportunities were missed to question the sheriff about how many illegal grows are still out there. Those are not honest people. That's correct. Anyone still growing right now is illegal, and there were, at one point, 2,000 to 2,500 illegal farms, and no one asked the sheriff how many there still currently are. And as a basis of trying to figure out how much money it's going to take to eradicate all those illegal farms, it might be beneficial to have that information. And, um, there was something else. I guess I have a minute to figure it out. Nearly 75% of the legal farms that were approved are in District 2. I don't believe there are going to be any left in District 5. And clearly, there are only three votes that are going to make this go through. And thank you, Commissioner Wooster, for being honest and upfront that you don't plan on voting for this, no matter how it exists. And Trent, I wish you would be honest and do the same, but I don't think that's going to happen. I'd love for you to prove me wrong. This can only be done with the three of you. And what the board, also, Mr. Maurer failed to acknowledge yesterday was that the board wants this to be successful and make it beneficial, achievable. Thank you.
Morning to the Commission, Bill McManus. We've, I've mentioned to you several times that you're proceeding with this, with this ordinance, and it's supposed to be based on findings, and there's no finding in existence that supports this ordinance or the reason to do it, none. All the findings say, don't do this, it's a problem, all the way down the line, I've mentioned it a couple of times. Now Commissioner Lattis wants to cover the tracks that have been laid down by coming up with a new finding based on money, that if we make enough money, I don't worry about it, it's going to be good for the county. Couple of weeks ago, I gave each of you a report from the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which was their audit for the first six months of 2019. State of California was expecting $200 million in receipts from the cannabis program. As of June, they had collected $2 million. That's 1%. So when you talk about pie in the sky, measure C is going to bring in all this money and save all the problems or secure all the problems in the county, it's a fairy tale. But if you like fairy tales, go ahead and go with that one. The other biggest problem, I think, is the co-location. When you have that many sites concentrated on one parcel, it's unworkable. If, in the case of odors, someone, there's a nuisance about odors, which plot is stinking? Or are they all? Or some more than others? How are you going to separate where the odor comes from? How are you going to take care of the security? You've got security for all five. What happens if one doesn't get involved in that? You know, you don't know what you're going to do with fences. How are you going to take care of security for up to five grows? The other is the crossover of the workers on the badge program. If you're working on Plot A, can you go over to Plot C and work there? Does the badge mean anywhere in the county? We don't know that, maybe that'll be settled tomorrow. The other one is on the high-density grows, first of all, you're going to be drawing more water, spilling more chemicals, you're going to have more noise, you're going to have more workers, the neighborhoods are going to be more intense with that activity going on with up to five different grows. When you're talking about water, if you use the 10-gallon-per-minute model, it's 14,400 gallons of whatever, that supports 2,300 plants a day, that's six gallons per plant. That's not very much. You can scale that up and see how many plants are we going to have in this county, and how much water are you really going to need? And what happens when the well goes dry? Now you're talking about in 1795.140, Section C, water delivery, where it's prohibited in 1795.090 EE or something like that, that water delivery trucks are not allowed because they tear up the roads. Where does the water get made up from? If you over-pump the wells and you can't bring trucks in, who's going to get it in the neck? It's going to be the people who live nearby when their aquifer goes dry.
Jennifer Stewart, District 2. The one thing that I don't see that there's any discussion on is the cost, the overall cost to society when you bring marijuana back in. We've got departments in the county with behavior health, mental health, substance abuse, CPS, elder abuse, there's all kinds of things that happen because of a drug culture. And it just doesn't seem like this, the county of Calaveras needs to be known as a place where you can grow pot freely. It's not what families came here to get away from the Bay Area and the Central Valleys because there's so much crime and problems. And when we saw yesterday at the Board of Supervisors meeting, these young mothers with their toddlers that are talking about the safety issues central to the homeless condition that we have over at the city, I mean, at the San Andreas Elementary School, that to me is a problem that does not need to be here. And the more we bring in an element that people that come from the Central Valley, that they have an opportunity to be working here, that they don't have a vested interest here with family and culture and society. It just, it takes everything in my heart to look at these pictures and know what Calaveras represents to all of us and what this criminality brings to us. And it's devastating for a family that wants to bring up their children in a way that there's no fear, and you can't. You can't, I work at nights. I cannot leave the place at night when this is going on without looking at everybody up and down the road wondering, why are they here at midnight walking on the road? It just, it's, it's not conducive to safety, and it's not conducive to families, and I think I've just, I just don't understand why we cannot bring things to the county that provide services, culture, music, plays, anything of a benefit to society, not this. This tears everybody down. I gave a book to the Board, each of the Board of Supervisors that describes the problems with marijuana in the young mind. If a kid who gets on marijuana early, there is a tendency or a proclivity toward bipolar disease, schizophrenia, and psychosis, and it's proved, and I don't understand why we're bringing it here. We have such a vulnerable society, and our, even our topography is vulnerable. The way our rains run off down into our water flows, our, I can't think of the word, anyway, it's, we have steep channels, we don't have flat channels where things can absorb into the ground and the, and the extra nutrient that comes out of these pots can be absorbed by water, I mean, by plants on side of the preparing areas. Thank you.
Hello, I don't want to be up here, but when the gentleman over here talked about him losing his house, I lost my house. My son lost his house in the Butte Fire. We didn't even get to gather our thoughts before marijuana took over. People from Texas, from all over, even out of state, out of country, took over, and then it was insult to insult, we've gotten, my son's fifth wall was stolen, our neighbor's trailer was stolen, our solar was stolen. I'm not seeing anything about these good growers, if that's who they are. Okay, I'm talking about the bad ones. And when you open this up again, we will still have the bad ones. It is not good for us, it is just not good for us. We couldn't even drive out our roads that we weren't having problems. I just consider the people even from the Butte Fire on the other side, please, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Before the last election, I was down at Marvell Parking Lot, so was the sitting supervisor down there that I was trying to assist, and a whole bunch of people from the pot culture and the progressives got together and called, a bunch of them called Marvell like they did on other people's dogs, and they called them and they got the managers to come out and ask the sitting supervisor to leave. They were doing something against the law, and then the policeman came and they asked him to leave, and he loaded up his stuff and left. And when he did that, he loaded two years of my life up and left with it because he would have been the third vote in favor of no pot versus a lot of pot. Water not being wasted and being conserved, and water rates being kept low, and water wasting of all kinds, unbelievable. I'm sorry that that happened to him, and I am also sorry that one of the people here that was here last time got removed by the police. What, for doing what? What did she do? I just don't get it. When the pot people want to talk, they get to talk ad nauseam. When someone that is legitimate wants to talk, forget it. This is America today, Calaveras, Callidopia.
Furman Brown. You know, before the ban came in, I made some checks with the sheriff's office. At one point, there was 167 complaints by a resident being stopped with a gun going home because between the gun and their home, there was a pot grow. Is this called quality of life? Nobody should be stopped with a gun going home to their private residence. And this is what we had before, it has slowed down tremendously now, but it is going to come back if this wide-open commercial growing continues. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? We're going to close the public comment portion and return this back to the commissioners. Who would like to start?
On which subject?
Your choice.
Well, I don't have any responses to the public comments, and if we're going to go to the addendum slash EIR next, I won't have any specific suggestions for changes. I will have a lot to say on whether I think an addendum is appropriate or not, but I'm not going to be in the business of editing the addendum.
I don't have any specific things to say about public comment, although just to correct one thing, I did state my position. I, when Commissioner Wooster stated what his feeling was on this, I said I felt exactly the same way. I didn't feel it was necessary for me to repeat exactly what he said, but I believe the public raised a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns that I have, and I also, similar feeling with the addendum for the EIR, I think it's highly inappropriate, I don't think it should be done, I don't think it's legal, but I guess we have to proceed.
I will have some edits, surprise, to the addendum, and, you know, I'm glad we had public comment. I always think it's good to air these things, and sometimes there are things brought up that are very much food for thought. So I appreciate the public being here, keeping their eyes on us, watching us, listening to us, and making their comments.
I don't have any comments on the public comment. I would like to apologize to the Butte Fire folks who took my comment in a way that was not intended, and possibly I didn't do a very good job of that, so I want to apologize. No, I certainly feel for all the people who lost anything during the Butte Fire, but certainly, we learned from that, the smell of burning cannabis plots is not something that's very pleasant to the neighbors, so, something we probably could have guessed. We didn't need to experience a wildfire to know that. But I think, is there any discussion that anybody would like to put out there before we talk about Commissioner Lattish's addendum potential edits?
I think we should go over Commissioner Lattish's potential edits, and then we will have a discussion. have a discussion on everything would be my preference.
I agree with that also.
You want to lead us?
Okay. On page four of the addendum, in under environmental analysis, the second paragraph, there is a, there's a description of who would be permitted under this, under this ordinance, draft ordinance. And I think it isn't fully up to date as to what the current status of the draft is. I think the second sentence, which talks about who would be permitted, I think just need to, we need to add something that will indicate that we did make a change. Language I have is, well, starting with the existing language, the registration had not been denied or withdrawn and had received a state license, and I would add, or had it denied because of the county's subsequent ban. I think that's accurate.
Do we have the addendum? Can we put it up on the screen?
Unfortunately, I don't have the addendum. It should be in the packet that you all received on the first day.
Right.
Yeah, I just thought that everybody would be able to see it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have it. Let me take a moment.
It's, Peter, it's attached to, like on the meetings, like the agenda packet, it's in there. The twel-, I just pulled up the agenda packet by September 12th and it's attached.
August, yeah, August 22nd.
It's in both. Yeah, the packet.
Okay, so much for that.
Yeah, I pulled it off of the.
I love everyone watching me view Google search. And I always see what the.
Peter, I went to board of supervisors and then what lists all the meetings and then went to the planning.
It's not, it's not in there anymore.
I went, well, so if you, on the board of supervisors tab, it lists like all the meetings, you know, and that's where you would get the video or what have you. And it has past meetings and I just went to the, okay.
So you need to go to the board tab rather than right next to it?
I think so. I mean, that's what I just do. And then meetings. And then I went to past meetings, September 12th, planning commission, the agenda packet. And I was, it's in there.
There you go.
Thank you, Sarah.
I think it's page 11 of 131. Like 11, I'm sorry, 11 of the PDF. So like 11 of 131.
Yeah. Okay, so we were under.
You're on 15.
That's where we were.
Yeah. But we're on page four of the addendum, right?
Right.
So it's actually.
That's as far as you need to go. Okay, so you got my first suggested change and I'd appreciate if there were any objections on the commission, just to say it right away so we don't pause for quite a while and ask for.
That was, and had not been denied because of the county's ban?
That's, that's close to what I said and that sounds fine. And then down two sentences from that, when you say this total is 190 licenses, I think we probably ought to say approximately because of that change.
Weren't there like five or six, something like that that would be added?
That's, that's why I'm saying approximately.
So the number is somewhere between 190 and 200?
Next, if you can have it sit on page six, toward the bottom of page six. Okay, that's fine. The paragraph now at the bottom of the screen, the impact would therefore be less. We were talking about the fossil fuel equipment and it was made clear in the staff's report that that was no longer needed for air quality, but it would contribute to greenhouse gas reduction. What I would like to add is a sentence and I'll read it and then read it slowly if you want. Eliminating the requirements of that mitigation measure has no effect on the amount of GHG reduction required by the draft ordinance. And that the greenhouse gas mitigation measure would be the same whether we had the fossil fuel restrictions or not. And I don't, we should not have an assumption that, that by, I mean, there is, there is a limit or there is a standard set for greenhouse gas reduction. And whether that's done by eliminating fossil fuel equipment or not is immaterial. It's, it's the limit. And so I think that that sentence is accurate and subject to editing for clarity, but that eliminating the fossil fuel mitigation measure does not reduce, does not, has no effect on the amount of the GHG reduction required by the draft ordinance.
So the addendum is not intended to, nor is it required to address changes that the commission or the board makes to any of the mitigation measures or the provisions of the ordinance. Those would be addressed in any findings of fact, it would be done upon final adoption. So the addendum addresses the analysis and the analysis, as I recall from the EIR, was that this measure addressed both air quality, air pollution impacts as well as greenhouse gases. I don't disagree with the conclusion that you've reached. I'm just not sure that making that change is necessary in that what the intent of the addendum is to do is to review the changed project in light of the analysis that was done in the EIR. And so irrespective of the decision to accept or reject any mitigation measure.
Well, the sentence that precedes my suggested insert, it says that the mitigation measure 3.2-2 prohibiting the use of fossil fuel powered equipment is no longer necessary for the purpose of mitigating air quality impacts, but would still apply as a measure to reduce impacts from greenhouse gas emissions. It won't, it wouldn't, it would be a factor in determining whether we were meeting this greenhouse gas standard, but in itself eliminating that does not affect what greenhouse gas reductions are required. They have to be made up somewhere else.
You're absolutely right.
It just seemed to me that that sentence before implied that there, that it's, that overall reduction of greenhouse gas emissions would be affected by this mitigation measure.
And you're referring because of the other requirement that they do the analysis and reduce it or compensate in some way.
Right, right.
That that's going to address the greenhouse gases. So having this specific requirement could be eliminated in lieu of something else.
Right.
To meet that reduction standard that needs to be established.
Exactly.
Like I say, I don't disagree with your.
Yeah, you just don't think it's necessary to have it in the addendum?
I don't know that it's necessary.
Or desirable.
I don't know that it necessarily hurts anything either.
I think it provides a balance. Since we have eliminated that, it isn't that we are opening the gates of greenhouse gas.
I sort of promised not to get into this editing. But the last part of that sentence there where it says, measure 3.2-2 would still apply as a measure to reduce impacts from greenhouse gas emissions is not correct, is it? Because we took it out?
This isn't responding to that. It is just saying if it was in there, it would still be a measure that would contribute to the reduction or the limitation of new greenhouse gases. But this isn't responding to what we did or didn't do. It's looking at each of the elements and saying whether they are necessary or not.
Yeah, essentially, do we need to do additional analysis? Is there new information, changes to the project that would indicate that the EIR did not provide sufficient analysis for the project at hand?
Well, I would say that's clearly the case, but that's a different discussion.
But it, the addendum is to present the picture as to where we are on the EIR. And if we've eliminated something from the EIR that is no longer necessary as far as, what is it, NO2 or whatever, NOX, but only pertains to greenhouse gas, the, seems to me there needs to be a reassurance that that does not mean that there will be more greenhouse gas. That the requirements of the, that there isn't a need to give a further environmental review to this subject because we've eliminated that, that particular mitigation measure. Because the only effect it would have now would be on the greenhouse gas requirements. And what I'm trying to say is they're taken care of by the other greenhouse gas provisions.
I understand what you're saying. I guess what I feel is maybe you're missing the point of what the addendum is.
Yeah, I may be, so.
And it's not necessarily the decision, your decision is based on the information available to you. And the information available is that that measure was included in the EIR as a means to both reduce air pollutants as well as greenhouse gases. The change in the provisions of this ordinance does not increase that impact, nor is there any new information that would say that the analysis in the EIR was inadequate to address this, notwithstanding other people's opinions of the contrary. So, you know, and it may well be that the statement itself was a conclusory statement that didn't need to be there, but it's there. And I just, I want to make sure that we're not trying to craft or revise the addendum to fit the decision that you may make. It's like, this is the information. This is.
Yeah, but, but, but the addendum does take into account, I mean, it was drafted when there was just the draft ordinance, and it does bring up to date, well, this ordinance does this, this ordinance increases setbacks, this ordinance does this, this doesn't does that.
But that's not necessary to address in the addendum.
Well, but you do elsewhere in the addendum. It seems, I thought the part of the addendum is to, to provide the entire environmental picture so as to reassure and to ensure that the existing EIR is sufficient to apply to the ordinance that we are actually going to be approving. And to do that, I think you have to look at the provisions of the ordinance that we are approving. And if we're discussing a part of the subject matter of the draft ordinance as it came into this, these proceedings, I think we need to update that.
So I guess the way I look at it is when you, the first time we looked at this and we had the EIR in front of us, and had the county decided to adopt an ordinance, a regulatory ordinance instead of a ban, we would not have revised the EIR to support the final decision that was made. there was just the draft ordinance, and it does bring up to date, well, this ordinance does this, this ordinance increases setbacks, this ordinance does this, this doesn't does that.
But that's not necessary to address in the addendum.
Well, but you do elsewhere in the addendum. It seems, I thought the part of the addendum is to, to provide the entire environmental picture so as to reassure and to ensure that the existing EIR is sufficient to apply to the ordinance that we are actually going to be approving. And to do that, I think you have to look at the provisions of the ordinance that we are approving. And if we're discussing a part of the subject matter of the draft ordinance as it came into this, these proceedings, I think we need to update that.
So I guess the way I look at it is when you, the first time we looked at this and we had the EIR in front of us, and had the county decided to adopt an ordinance, a regulatory ordinance instead of a ban, we would not have revised the EIR to support the final decision that was made. You make the findings of fact that support that decision based on the information in the record. So we don't necessarily change the record. We say, you know, we, for example, we approve a project that has a significant impact. And you make a finding, a statement of overriding consideration, that even though the EIR said that this would be an impact, we reject the mitigation measure or we modify the mitigation measure because, and then you lay out your reasoning why. So I think what you're trying to get at is creating those findings of fact that the board will ultimately make when they adopt an ordinance.
Okay, so...
As opposed to modifying the background information that says, here's the information that we have based on the draft ordinance that was prepared at the direction of the board and presented to you initially. You've since modified it. The board will take that recommendation and either accept it or make further modifications. And then, at the end of the day, we will need to go back, similar to what we did with the general plan EIR, and we're still working on, to identify the support for the decision that the board made based on information in the record and the facts presented to the board, to you, that here is the reasoning for making this change and accepting the fact that there may be an impact. For example, we identify that odors are a significant and unavoidable impact in the EIR. We've reduced it somewhat by increasing the setbacks, but we haven't eliminated it. And that's an impact that the county, should it adopt the ordinance, is willing to make. And the reasons why need to be laid out in the final findings based on what the board decision is.
So for, to maybe...
So I think what you're trying to do is create the finding of fact in this document, and that, this is sort of a snapshot.
Okay, so, to get an idea, see if I've got, if I've got it now. If there are statements in here about what the draft ordinance does that are no longer accurate, those should be corrected.
No.
No, I don't think so. Because again, the draft ordinance was what was initially presented to you in August.
Well, no, but I mean, but you're saying, okay, let, forget about draft ordinance.
Can we just have a stab at this for a minute?
Well, no, just, let me try again. Like, on page seven, where you talk about the setback has been increased from 30 feet to 75 feet, and I was going to suggest that we should say, and in some cases, 150 feet. I mean, you're giving facts about what ordinance we are going to be testing this EIR with. And it seems to me that if, that those facts need to be accurate.
But, but no, this is, this is based on an analysis of the draft that was presented to you, not the draft that you're recommending to the board.
And the project in any environmental document is a very conceptual project. It doesn't necessarily have all of the details. If you go back to the original EIR, there was the project that was a potential regulation. There was also a ban. There was a, and then a couple alternatives for different levels of regulation. But the background information remains the same. And then they look at how those compare to one another, how those environmental impacts for each of those potential projects. But none, none of those projects are fleshed out entirely. So in this case, we have a new project, which is the draft ordinance that was presented to us, which was far further fleshed out, but still not necessarily in its final form. So our understanding of the EIR and the mitigations should inform our decisions about what edits we are willing to make to the document, but we're not going backwards to make them match. I might not have made that any clearer.
I just don't understand why we have statements in here as to what we are doing that are not accurate as to what we might...
It's not what we are doing, it's what was proposed.
Okay, okay. And that's, if that's, that's the only thing we're looking at, it'll, we'll...
He's going to move right along.
Be a lot quicker. Okay, page eight. This'll be easy. Right in the middle of the page, paragraph starts since certification. I was just waiting until you got it up a little.
Yeah, right there.
Right there. Okay, second line, it just, there needs to be a D at the end of associated. How's that?
I can live it.
I get it.
Okay, so then on page nine, under hydrology and water quality, the second paragraph. What this draft does is observing a decline in water levels for a period of three years, and here it says five. I think this was probably taken from the last, the last regulatory order. Okay, the paragraph starts additionally, additionally, there you go. And down third, the end of the third line, this draft was talking about a period of three years.
Well, no. This is talking about what the DER found, and this is completely accurate because the FEI modified it to say five years.
Right, FEIR modified, made a suggestion to modify.
Okay, all right. Back to safe things, down another few lines, the line starts, "Insurance against such problems is large," should be parcel, not parcels. And then at the end of that line is...
So spelling errors and things like that don't really matter at this point?
Okay.
Because this has already been published.
Okay.
So I will have to live with those spelling errors for the rest of my life.
Okay. Ah, shame. Okay, so things like the statement at the bottom of page nine, generators would have to be housed inside a structure to reduce noise, since that was the way it was when we got it. That's the way it should be in here?
It is no longer.
Well, except in here. Okay, page 10, the last paragraph before cumulative impacts. Yeah, right there. The question on the third line is whether it should say distributors or laboratories. It's talking about, there'd be no increase in the number of trips or vehicle miles traveled since the same number of trips would be necessary to transport cannabis product to distributors? Maybe I'm just unclear, but if you're transporting it, I thought, I thought the next step was going to be for the self-distribution would be to a laboratory for testing.
So the...
Just correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah. And maybe Ethan can help out on this a little bit. The way I understand, the way the state law works, is that a licensed transporter takes it to a distributor. The distributor then takes it to testing or manufacturing or wherever else it goes from there.
I see. So transporter is not necessarily a distributor?
Right.
Okay, okay.
It can be the same.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the purpose of that section is just to allow cannabis cultivators to be able to get their own cannabis off their property without having to pay a distributor to come and get it.
I see. Okay, and that's it? What you believe?
Commissioner Wooster, I believe you have things you would like to express.
Well, and it's going to take a while, and I personally need a break anyway. I would suggest a lunch recess.
So is an hour enough for lunch for everybody up here?
Yes.
Guys can live with an hour?
An hour and seven minutes.
Hour and seven minutes.
How, yes, how about we'll be back at 1:00?
1 o'clock.
Yes. I think we will pick up with Commissioner Wooster. You are going to speak to the addendum.
Actually, I was going to speak to the ordinance and the addendum.
Sure.
Because the two go together.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There continue to be three main reasons I'm not in favor of recommending this draft ordinance to the board. The first is the potential influx of growers attracted to the county. If it's perceived as a regulation county, not a banned county. The last time around, in 2016 and 2017, every county surrounding Calaveras banned commercial grows. Last time around, we had the influx disaster. People came here. Much the same thing is true today, as respects our neighbors. The information I have is that every county surrounding us, Amador, Alpine, San Joaquin, Stanislaw, and Tuolumne, ban outdoor commercial grows. Alpine, Amador, and Tuolumne don't allow any commercial growing at all. We would be the only county in the foothills around us to allow commercial grows, and the only county of the six allowing outdoor commercial activity. So I'm afraid that the stage is set for another disaster. There's a lot more. Now there are a lot of cultivation sites that have been shut down or abandoned, but they're prepared. They got water, grading, leveled. That's likely to make the county an even more attractive place for would-be illegal growers. The draft ordinance would allow cultivation for recreational use, making a county even more of a magnet. Now the draft has been modified to accommodate a future potential expansion, already signaled by the board, to allow dispensaries to sell, not just medical marijuana, but also recreational. This would be done through amendments to chapter 17.91, the dispensary ordinance. Violation of this ordinance would be an infraction, not a misdemeanor, as was the case before. I understand the reasons for this, and I understand that the penalties are more strict and harsher, but the potential for misperception on the part of people outside the county is still there. The sheriff spoke to us at length. He confirmed that as a result of the previous growing, there are a lot of sites already available. There is activity on social media, identifying counties like Calaveras that have signaled they will allow it. Social media will advertise this county as a place to go to. If this draft ordinance is enacted, he would expect a lot of employees coming in, and people who want to grow illegally will come as well. They will be coming, in his words, "to hide in plain sight." It will enhance the problem of illegal grows. The sheriff also advised that marijuana is not the same as any other agricultural product. It brings violent crime. There are lots of complaints about odor. Not, we don't get that with other ag. There's such a black market here. He doesn't expect a downturn in activity anytime soon. With marijuana selling at $800 a pound here and $5,000 in Florida, people will come.
Commissioner Wooster, can you pull your mic a little closer? It's hard to hear you.
And, you know, the illegality isn't confined to the high number from out of the county. Quite a few residents approved under the urgency ordinance and registered still continued to grow after it was illegal. Now, the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer in this county. He was elected by voters across the entire county, not just one district. I think his views are entitled to great weight. I asked the question at the first meeting here, what information is out there to show that there will not be another influx disaster? And after I expressed that concern at the first meeting on August 22nd, there were public comments. One response was, "An influx is for the county to deal with." That's correct. And the way to do that is to keep the ban in place and head off the influx. No one suggested, my concern was unfounded, not to worry, it won't happen, let alone explain why it won't happen. I just think that whatever benefits people may see coming out of this regulation, the risk of another disaster, and no one is denying that risk exists, makes it not worth it. And if you are dealing with people who are going to come in and grow illegally, such as these illegals, it doesn't matter how well or how strict or how harsh the regulation is, they're not going to follow it anyway. So no matter how we try to write this thing, we got the problem. The second reason is the tax refund litigation. With cases pending in Superior Court and the Court of Appeal, they use challenge the collection of the major taxes. I don't suggest that any of these cases has any merit whatsoever. But I do think the county should hold off on any regulation until these cases are over with, so we know where we are. The third is whether the county should be doing an EIR as to this proposed regulation. I'm not a CQ expert, and I don't express any legal opinion as to this. At the last meeting on August 27th, or the meeting on August 27th, I raised as an issue the fact that the final EIR considered the ban to be the environmentally superior alternative. And the board certified the EIR and adopted the ban. And then it makes sense to me then, and it does it now, to use the same EIR that was certified in connection with the ban as the environmentally superior alternative to support doing something completely different. Passing that, going off the staff report, once an EIR is certified for a project, the county doesn't need to do another EIR unless there are either substantial changes in the project or with respect to the circumstances under which the project was undertaken, with new or more severe environmental effects in either case. The addendum does identify a change in the project from 22,000... The addendum does identify a change in the project from 22,000 square feet maximum outdoor grow canopy. That's under the previously proposed ordinance to 43,560.
Excuse me, you're not being heard. I'm not here. So your whole speech that you just made has not been recorded, audiotaped?
It's being recorded. It's just not, there's no audio.
People can't hear. We got a call from someone on the outside that was viewing it.
And we can't hear it now, either.
The only thing that we could do is stop moving and trying to start that. I don't know why it's letting me stop recording. My stuff is still working. I'm still doing audio here.
It's recording now?
Yes. And it will be available both on YouTube and we will give a copy of the document.
I just got, I just got one from Hawaii that said that someone's watching it, and they said, "There's no audio."
Okay, and there's honestly, there's nothing to do about that, right?
Okay, yeah, sorry.
But it will be available, so don't worry. I've got it all. In two formats, by the way.
Okay, I'll continue. The addendum says that 73% of the previously licensed cultivators used mixed light, and that's unlikely to change. And even if they all went to outdoor cultivation, the total canopy area would be less than 50% of the potential canopy analyzed in the EIR, which was 750 sites. The addendum is mathematically correct. 190 grows, or even 200 grows, of one acre of canopy is less canopy than 50% of 750 grows, which is about 375 acres. But for the most part, the EIR didn't focus on total canopy allowed. At least in some instances, the limitation to 22,000 square feet per site did make a difference, regardless of the total acreage allowed to grow under the project name. As to noise, the draft environmental impact report states, "Given that the planning area would not exceed 22,000 square feet, at the largest grow sites, the use of large tractors is not anticipated." That's at page 3.7-8. As to biological resources, the draft environmental impact report points out that although the ordinance would require fencing grow sites, which could restrict wildlife movement in the area, the fencing would be up to one half acre per site and would not preclude the movement of wildlife through the area, page 4-4. As to odors, the draft report, at Impact 3.2-4, says the larger the size of canopy area, the greater the potential for odor to be evident to off-site receptors. As to hydrology and water quality, the draft report estimated the operation of mixed light and outdoor cultivation sites could require up to 390,000 gallons of water per one-half acre per year. CCWD commented that with a cap of 22,000 square feet per site and up to 375 acres and 750 sites permitted, this doesn't seem to be a particularly impactful on a grand scale of the entire county footprint. But on a small geographic scale, there could be significant hazards in relation to local hydrology. That's in the FEIR, page 2-29. And while CCWD said it agreed with the finding that groundwater supply impacts could potentially be significant, it wrote, "However, given the size of the proposed project and the cap on outdoor grows at 22,000 square feet per permitted site, the impacts of total water use may not be very big at all for the typical permitted grow site." But what happens to these issues if the project doubles the size of the grow? We don't know that, because there's no DEIR to cover it. And it may not be a valid assumption that the method of cultivation is unlikely to change from 73% mixed light, so the potential increase in cultivation area per site would be minimal. If someone was set up for an outdoor cultivation, the area is graded, leveled, water is available, why not go for an acre? And if it was mixed light before, maybe now an acre outdoors makes sense. Another change in the project, which was done at the last meeting, is to change the annual well-water tests from five years, which is what it was, to three years. The addendum recognized the five-year period as the EIR mitigation, and then says a modified version has been incorporated in the ordinance. Apparently, the modification is to go to three years, a definite change in the project, such that the EIR doesn't support the ordinance. The addendum doesn't identify any change in the circumstances under which the project is undertaken. I think there have been. As the September 6th staff report points out, the baseline was set as April 5, 2016. Cannabis cultivation was illegal then, as it is now. And that is correct, but that's not the problem. The draft environmental impact report pointed out that the existing environmental conditions included the existing cultivation sites in some stage of development, which the county could determine because of the application process under the urgency ordinance. So it took as the baseline the then-existing proliferation of illegal cultivation sites. And this comes up several times in a draft environmental impact report. As to aesthetics, Impact 3.1-1. Cannabis activities were occurring prior to and under the urgency ordinance. Regulation is anticipated to reduce visual effects of cultivation when compared to those conditions. Impact 3.1-2. Bringing baseline legacy cultivation operations into compliance would help attenuate environmental effects from existing cultivation activities. Hydrology and water quality, Impact 3.5-1. The construction water quality impacts. The ordinance is intended to bring unregulated, illegal operations into compliance. Impact 3.5-2. Operation water quality impacts. It discusses the risks of cannabis operations without a permit affecting water quality. Land use and planning, Impact 3.6-1. The ordinance will reduce conditions that create public nuisances. Population housing, Impact 3.2-3.8-1. It writes of numerous reports of employees residing on grow sites illegally, without proper housing, and with the ordinance, the county could better control seasonal housing. The point is, the conditions on the ground environmentally were a mess with all of the illegal, unregulated grows. And the EIR recognized that as the baseline and compared the impact of the proposed regulation to that baseline. Now the county has over three years of enforcement activities, both under the urgency ordinance and the ban. The numbers of abatements done through code compliance citations add up to at least 401. They gave us the figures by years. Code compliance jointly with the sheriff in 2019 abated 50 more. And code compliance advised that a fair amount of grows were voluntarily abandoned without citation. The sheriff gave his figures for eradication of sites by year. They add up to 191. The total, 191 sheriff, 50 joint, 401 code compliance, that's 642 sites. So I think an EIR is in order to compare the effects of this proposed ordinance, adding nearly 200 cultivation sites against the vastly different baseline that exists now, with at least 640 sites eradicated, more abandoned voluntarily, as opposed to the rampant illegal growing taking place in April of 2016. So I think a new or supplemental EIR is in order, but I would not recommend this ordinance at all. And I would leave the ban in place for reasons I've stated.
I'm not going to go over a lot of what we just heard, because I agree with everything I just heard. But I do want to emphasize a few things. Again, the sheriff made it very clear that with regulation will come illegal activity. Under the ban, they've been able to eradicate far more illegal sites because they're easier to find. All sites are illegal. We were told last time they were working on regulation, and this time that we need regulation in order to take care of the illegal grows. But again, we heard from the sheriff, that's not the case. It's just the opposite. We increase the number of illegal grows when we do regulation. My concern is that, I know that a lot of this is driven because there's some in the county that want the tax money. We're putting profit over the environment. We're putting profit over public safety as a county. We're putting profit over the health and well-being of our children and our youth. And nobody likes to talk about that. We tried to bring it up, but some of the most solid research has shown the effect that marijuana has on the developing brain. It's not junk science. It's been proven. You can laugh all you want. It's been proven. It reduces the size of the adolescent brain, and it does not recover. And that effect is up until 25 years of age, once your brain has stopped developing. After that, there is no effect. You wonder why I'm concerned. When I see growers that say that they are legitimate, caring growers, and they laugh when you bring up the effect on children, that concerns me. We're putting public profit over the quality of life in the county. Many people move to this county because they like the wide-open spaces, they like the fresh air, they like the rural lifestyle. But we don't seem to care about the fresh air anymore, as long as we can get tax money. Almost every commissioner here kind of stated that they don't want it next to them. But some commissioners here say they don't want it next to them, but they didn't mind putting regulation in effect and put it next to me. Well, if you don't want it next to you, you shouldn't want it next to anybody. I don't want it next to me. I don't think it should be next to anybody. It stinks. 75 feet is not going to take care of that. We're going to have lots of complaints about odor, especially because now you're doubling the size of the grow from a half acre to an acre. You're doubling the odor. Now you also want to cluster grows. Every 20 acres, you could have, you could have an acre grow. You put five acres of grow, how much more have you increased the smell? And it travels, when you increase that much, it travels for miles in a mild wind. So those are my concerns. The only regulation we should be considering is regulating personal grows. We have no choice on that, because the state says that we have to allow that. And it's, so we can't stop that, but we can regulate that. And that's the only thing we should be looking at, is regulating that. And going back to the issue of public safety, a thing that also concerns me is that now we're talking about adult use, recreational use. Marijuana is an intoxicant. And I don't like being on the roads with intoxicated drivers. My wife and I went to Taco Bell one night to have dinner, and sitting in a car were two people smoking pot. Believe me, I know what it is. I used to smoke it when I was younger. One of them got out of that car, got into another car, they both drove away. I have to go out on the same road that they're driving on. And I don't know how we address that, but we're going to increase that. There was one time, it was suggested if we get the grows going again, that we could have tours. People can do, like they have wine tasting, we can have cannabis tasting in the county. I don't like the idea of wine tasting either. I don't like people intoxicated on the roads when I'm on the roads. I certainly don't want to add to that. So we got, this doesn't take into consideration public safety. Also, I also agree that the lawsuits against the county should be settled. We can say, "Yeah, we don't think they're going to, you know, they have a chance, but we should find out first." Because we don't know what's going to happen with the tax money. The other concern I have is that we don't know what all the costs are going to be to the county. We don't know if all those, we claim they're going to be recovered. We don't even know if they were covered last time around. People have asked for that accounting. It's never been given. Nobody can, really seem to know where all that money went, what it was spent on. It seems like it was deliberately flushed away. And that concerns me when the public asks for information, they're told they can't have that information. Public was, they asked for information on how many sites are available for grows to be on, based on what we're looking at. They're told that information's not available. Well, when regulations came up before, and I remember one of the supervisors, he wanted to limit it to 50, and they said, "Well, you can't put a number on it on a limit." So he says, "Well, let's take a, let's take a look at the acreage size. If we put it at this acreage, how many lots are available?" They were able to go into a back room and have that answer within a half an hour. How can you tell the public that information is not available and they don't deserve it? This has been rushed. It's being shoved on us. The fact that we're trying to do an addendum to the EIR when it clearly is a new project and not doing at least a supplemental EIR, why are we rushing this? We were told that this should not be rushed. This didn't come from me. It didn't come from Commissioner Wooster. This came from Peter. You said, in the, when we had the study session, you said this should not be rushed. We need to take our time and make sure we do it right. But all of a sudden, we're like being pushed to meet these deadlines, to the point where we try to limit public input. That bothers me as a commissioner. When we did the, when they were going through the general plan, we discussed one section, had additional public comment for the next section. No question about it. Five minutes a person. Nobody concerned about how long that public comment was going to take. Here, we discuss one section, we want to move on to another, because there's two things we're supposed to vote on here. We had to fight for the public to get their opportunity to make comment. Something is not right. We need to slow down, take our time with this, and make sure it's done right. As it stands right now, I could not vote for the regulations that we have, because I think it's, again, it's opening the county up for another disaster. We claim that it's being capped at a certain number of grows, but you guarantee that's going to be challenged. And when it's challenged, we don't know that, oh, well, it's not fair that we only hold it to people that were growing before, so now we need to open up to people that have property that qualifies. So we really don't know the number of grows we're going to wind up with. But what we do know is even at 190, the sheriff's department said, "Anything more than 50, and you make it easy for the illegal grows." anything more than 50, and you make it easy for the illegal grows to hide amongst them. There are a lot of concerns that I have with this. So, no, I will not be voting for the regulation, and I will not be approving the addendum. I think that we need to do at least a supplemental EIR to do this properly.
I believe the purpose of this ordinance is to regulate commercial growing operations. It can't be proactive. We have to be reactive. This is not an issue that's going to go away. It is getting worse. As time goes on, more and more people use cannabis. The laws are changing. We have to get in front of this. We can't be an ostrich putting our heads in the sand. We have to get a grasp on this. This may not be a perfect ordinance, but at least we got to get in front of this to control the legal growths. If we allow, on the path that we are taking right now with the ban, there are grows up in these hills right now. There are legal operations up there now. By at least putting ordinance in place and strongly regulating the industry, we can control what elements are growing the cannabis in our county. Do I think cannabis is a gateway drug? Yes. Do I think children should be doing it? No. But also alcohol and tobacco is a gateway drug. Them industries are both heavily regulated and watched. I think it's easier for children, school-aged children, to purchase marijuana than it is for them to buy alcohol or tobacco. This is a, it's a difficult thing. I have school-aged children. Yes, have I smoked marijuana, past? Yes, when I was a youth. Do I do it now? No. Am I going to do it? No. But if adult, responsible adults want to partake into it, who am I to stop them? It's no different me imposing what somebody should be able to drink. They want to drink alcohol, so I'm not, if they're responsible, I have no issue with that. I do agree with Tim. I don't like seeing it, people driving down roads, smoking it. I don't like seeing people getting cars after drinking wine or at a bar, driving down roads because I got to be on the roads as well. But that is for the law enforcement to control. But I think that if we regulate this and do it correctly, we can reduce the environmental damage that is caused right now currently. Out in public, if people are regulated, they don't have to hide. They don't have to dump stuff. They can dispose of the fertilizers and whatever waste legally and appropriately. So I do recommend this ordinance.
And the EIR, sorry.
Well, I'd first want to state my appreciation for everybody who's spent the time here. No, I really do. Because I think it's beneficial for the commission to hear what you people have to say, and it's beneficial just to know that the community's watching. And I tried to add to that procedure by having my handouts made available to the public before each hearing, which was something that's not required. But that way, you could take a look at it. The illegal grows are a scourge on the county. There's no question about that. And just from my experience of the people who had their permits denied, I know the type of environmental violations that can happen on unregulated or on grows that are not following the law. And it's awful. It's absolutely terrible. Now, the, and I hope that one way or another, we can cut those down, cut down the illegal grows or eradicate them. But it is important to note that the EIR, when it said that the ban was the environmentally superior alternative, also made it clear that it was based on an assumption of compliance with the law, that there would not be illegal grows. It was just an assumption, not criticizing the drafters of the EIR. It was, that was the job they were given to do. Well, if we're going to look to conditions on the ground, we know that under the ban of the last couple of years, the assumption is factually baseless. There are illegal grows in a situation where there is a ban. The county isn't wealthy. And I know this sometimes sounds like the old refrain, but Measure C does provide a source of income to the county. It goes into the general fund, and then it's up to the board of supervisors to decide how it's to be dispersed. But you can guarantee that if this ordinance is passed, why some, the Measure C money will come in, and at least some of that, in fact, a healthy proportion of that will go to the sheriff. The sheriff recognized that he would be, he'd be quite happy if there was a sudden resurgence of money into the Measure C coffers because, as he noted, the board of supervisors has recognized that the use of that money for enforcement against the illegal grows is a very positive use for that money. So there are illegal grows. And then there are grows that are consistent with our law. And our law, I mean, this law will bring more farms to the county. It's what they're farming is what causes the issue. But by itself, these farms will be subject to more environmental scrutiny and enforcement than other farms. I mean, we've heard. We're not imposing greenhouse gas reduction requirements on wineries. And so the farms that will conform to this law will be environmentally sound agricultural, I guess we can't say agricultural, but businesses out there in the, on the ground. And I, from District 2, and I'm, I was aware during the time of the urgency ordinance that there were some benefits. And one of those was there was an influx of young families to this county. And this is something that we've been trying to achieve in Calaveras County for years. I mean, if you just look in the abstract, this brings more commerce and more people, more families to the county. It also provides a means for recovery from the disaster of the Butte Fire that we had several years ago. One thing I think I am quite thankful for, it's not just the county that's regulating these farms and helping to control the environment. The state has a very active hand in it, particularly the water board. It is, I find it that the water, without the water board enforcement, I would be much more nervous about the effect on the environment of these farms. But they're, the water board keeps a very well-regulated watch on this. So with the influx of young families, I've seen that some of the struggling schools in District 2 in particular were helped considerably to stay open. So I think, I think that the county can deal with the ban, excuse me, we've dealt with the ban, can deal with regulation, you got me. And that I'm prepared to vote for the ordinance as we have amended it. And as far as the EIR goes, I would ask legal counsel if she believes that it's appropriate for us to proceed on the basis of the addendum without any further EIR activity.
Yes, it's the opinion of my office as well as that of outside counsel with whom we've been working closely, that the existing EIR plus the addendum are adequate.
With the addendum?
Yes. I'm sorry. It is, I just said that it's the opinion of my office as well as that of outside counsel that the existing EIR and addendum are adequate.
Well, I think the addendum makes a good point, and I'm not going to belabor that the project that was proposed in the EIR was going to be more burdensome among the environment than the proposal that was presented to us. And I believe that the proposal, as we have amended it, is, assists in helping the environment. And so I think it's more environmentally friendly than it was when it came to us. And so I, for the reasons given in the addendum, I feel there's no reason to reopen the EIR proceedings, and I will be voting for the regulation.
So I want to appreciate my commissioners who sat here for a long time and many members of the public who've spent a lot of time here with us. And I understand that everyone feels strongly that they understand the issues and that it seems obvious to them that one path or another is the right path. For me, the path is always gray and winding. And there's lots that was, that were said by the various commissioners and the public today that I agree with. In the end, the board of supervisors asked the planning commission to weigh in on a draft ordinance. So our job is to look at that ordinance and try to balance the interests of the various members of our community so that if an ordinance is enacted, we are at least providing our best recommendations to the board. Given that I've been here since 1979, and I initially moved to Mountain Ranch, I am well aware of the history of cannabis in this county. It has been here as long as I can remember, and I'm sure there's many people who've lived here longer and know more about it. It's always had its problems with enforcement. But I think that the future is staring us in the face. And I agree with Commissioner Henderson that it's not likely we are going to be able to go back in time to some period when the cannabis growers weren't here. I think our only chance of having an orderly industry is to regulate it and to get out ahead of it if we can. The urgency ordinance, in hindsight, could have been done much better for everybody. I'm sure that there are many people who could have been protected better by a different ordinance, and there are many growers who could have benefited by a different ordinance. But that's all behind us now, and we can hope to have learned our lesson and to come up with a better ordinance this time. I spent a lot of time yesterday reading through both the ordinance and through the previous environmental documents, both the draft and final EIR, and looking at everything before us. And I am comfortable in recommending that this move forward to the board of supervisors and that the EIR and the addendum have adequately addressed the environmental issues. Do I wish there was a solution that could make everyone happy? Yeah, of course. That's my personality. I wish I could find that place. And I know no one is going to be completely happy with anything that happens here today. But I'm ready to move this over to the board of supervisors, who are the final decision-makers and who are the elected representatives. So I don't think anyone needs to hear any more from me.
Well, I suppose I can say a few more things.
Sure, go ahead.
This, the comparison to alcohol and tobacco comes up more than once. And the huge difference is that marijuana is basically, other than the medical stuff up till now, a black market. It's not like tobacco and alcohol. Mostly, it's a black market. That's what the sheriff is saying. The issue of the illegal grows, and right now, they're all illegal, is being taken care of. I think the sheriff said they were taking care of four to six a week, and the number keeps growing. And there are illegal grows with the ban. We all know that. That's what's being eradicated. And the ban's been in effect, what, a little over a year? I think it ought to be given more of a chance to work. With respect to the comment that we, you know, the previous regime allowed for an influx of young families, which is beneficial to the county. The way this is set up, it's only the people who held permits before that are going to be able to apply for a permit now. There's not going to be another influx of nice young families coming into this county. With respect to the opinions of counsel, I'm not sure that outside counsel have had the benefit of hearing all of the facts and information that came out of this hearing. And perhaps they would want to take another look at this. What I didn't hear from anybody is an answer to my first major point, which is, what about the risk of another influx of illegal growers? Nobody has told me not to worry. There won't be one, and here's why. And that was my biggest concern, and it has gone unanswered. That's all I have to say.
Just a couple additional comments. One, it's been brought up several times. When the EIR said the ban was a superior way to go, that it counted on 100% compliance. What we don't hear is that the EIR considers that all the options that are presented are going to be, have 100% compliance, not just the ban. We keep hearing that over and over about the ban, but the EIR, even what we're looking at today, regulations, is considering that there's going to be 100% compliance. And from what the Sheriff's Department told us, there is not going to be. There wasn't in the past. There's not going to be in the future. The other thing about, well, we've got all these state regulations now, and the state's going to come in, and they're going to make sure these are being followed. The state made it clear, do not expect us to come and help. We do not have the manpower. We do not have the money. That was made clear to members of the county staff at a meeting in the early summer from the Board of Cannabis Control. Don't count on us. You have to do this yourself. So you got to take that off the table. As far as all the comments about regulation is going to take care of the illegal grows, we keep coming back to that, but that's the exact opposite of what the Sheriff's Department told us. Sheriff's Department did not confirm that. He said, "No, with regulation, you will get an influx of illegal grows." So we have not helped with that situation at all. And yes, we can recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we want them just to regulate personal grows, and we want them to keep the ban in place and give it a chance to continue working. It is working. You're reading every single week in the papers about the eradication of illegal grows. That means it's working. There are a lot more articles on eradication of illegal grows than there was before we had a ban. Hardly read any. That's because it's working. So just want those facts put out there. The decision we're making is not going to, is not going to take care of the illegal grows. The illegal grows are being taken care of much better under a ban.
I have no further comment.
Nor I.
Nor I. I don't believe that anyone believes that simply regulating will eliminate all illegal grows. I think that an aggressive enforcement program will certainly be necessary. Peter, you need a recommendation. How do you want to handle this?
Well, a motion to adopt the, we need a motion to either adopt or reject the resolution or amendment to the resolution.
All two.
That would be attachment one of the initial staff report from August 22nd, I believe.
2019-024.
Yes.
Fall one.
It's a single, single resolution, yes.
Do we have a motion?
I saw a move. Second.
I'm going to do us one at a time. Commissioner Booster?
Are we having a vote?
Yes.
We just had a motion and a second.
Well, my vote's no.
Commissioner Fiorino?
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Passes on a three-two vote, with Commissioner Booster and Fiorino opposed. And I believe we are adjourned.
Well, I would like to ask something. Is there a chance that, I know there isn't the time, the time schedule set by the Board of Supervisors for us to once again meet and look at the once again revised draft, is there a chance for you to send to the commissioners, when you have it prepared, the draft, and that we individually could just email you?
I would be happy to do that. If you identify something that I missed, as, for example, the striking medical, which is, I overlooked that when I made the edits last time. By all means, please let me know, and I can let the board know that if there are changes that I missed, I can make that correction.
Well, what I'm wondering is if we could have a day or two before you submit it to the board for us to look at it. I don't know what your time is.
Yeah. I'll be making the edits that were adopted today immediately, starting this afternoon. Hopefully get them done by the end of this week. And I'll be preparing a packet for the board within the same timeframe. But the hearing is technically scheduled for October 1st, and so any corrections that you might have, I can certainly present to the board at that time.
Okay, so the answer is no. You don't get a crack at it?
There probably won't be like a window of, please review this before I get to the board because of the timeframes that I need to get. I'm already a week behind on meeting that normal deadline for boards to middle the packet. So, but by all means, if I've missed something, please send me a correction. Not a redebate of an issue, but simply, you know, I missed one of the edits that we made or, you know.
The word superfluous will not be in any email.
Thank you. Now, I believe we are adjourned.